Good afternoon, everyone. Today is, what is today? Today is May 11, 2023. This is a City of Prescott Budget Workshop. Should we take roll?
We can. Mayor, good.
Present.
Mayor Protem Montoya is not here yet. I'll note when he arrives. Councilwoman Cantelmi.
Here.
Councilman Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Rusing.
Here.
Councilman Sishka.
Here.
And Councilman Tenney.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Very good. I guess we can start with a description of our agenda items today.
Thank you. Fiscal Year 24 Budget Workshop Discussions, Part One.
Thank you, City Clerk.
Thank you, Sarah. Mayor and Council, Mark Woodfell, Budget and Finance Director. It's a pleasure to be here today as always. I get my presentation going there. And we named it Number One so you can have the anticipation that there will be a sequel. So you can stay tuned on that. Let's see if I can figure out the clicker here. This is the budget calendar to date, and it's important that we look at it because, as you'll remember, it started back in November when we did the council's strategic planning. Now, the strategic plan is, you know, the council's portion of the budget. That's where you set the goals and the priorities for the city staff and the city manager's office to develop a budget, which is what we've done and what is going to be presented today. Now, we also had the mid-year look, and you'll remember a lot of that was kind of bleak because at that time, the state legislature decided you didn't need money to run a city, which is great news. Looking forward to that. But I think most of those issues have been put to bed at the legislature. But of course, nothing's a deal until, you know, nothing's final until they're gone out of the, out of the building down there.
Shiny.
So since then, of course, the departments have been bringing in all their requests and their projections, and city manager's office and budget department has met with them and gone through those and put together a budget to meet your strategic objectives. And that is what we're going to go over today. So the proposed budget, proposed budget, the study pack has been out on the website since the first part of May, as well as the complete capital detail is out there. I gave you guys an email when those got out there so you could look at them. I'm, I'm sure you guys read all 300 and some pages of those documents in great detail, but we're going to talk at a higher level today. Today's presentation will be at a department level. We'll talk about the significant changes, you know, and how, you know, how that leads in. And we're also going to be changed a little bit from the years past in that, as you will recall, in Janu-, February, January, when we did the procurement code changes, we established approved expenditure list, an AEL, which will allow staff to proceed with getting the business of the city done. We'll still do all the procurement methods, the bidding and all that, but council will approve all these expenditures in one approval with the 2024 budget, whatever council agrees to put on that list. So to get that detail and that discussion and direction from staff of what these things are, we've changed the departmental detail of this presentation quite a bit, which is why we're going into two days when we used to always take care of this in one day. We just figured we'd need additional time. There will be, as I said, the second day, the sequel will be in two weeks from today in the same place, same town, on May 25. If anything comes up today that you want more information on or more detail on what we look at today or other things, let us know. We will include that in the 25th presentation if we can't answer it today. And as always, if you think of something after, after today and you want to get ahold of city staff, we have our phone number up there. Give, give us a call, shoot us an email, and we'll include, hopefully, the additional information you want in the presentation on the 25th. So some of the summaries of this budget in whole. Market compensation, we did the market, the pay plan a few years ago, and we've tried to keep that in place. Council will recall in the fall of the year with inflation high and concerns about paying, concerns about employee turnover, especially in our public safety area, council agreed to do a 5% CPI early as a portion of the CPI that was anticipated to be needed for the fiscal '24. So that 5%, of course, is carried over into this budget as well as the other 6.5%, which is where the CPI, Phoenix CPI, annual versus annual, came out being last year. And in addition to that, we've included a 2% merit that is based on employee performance. There are new positions in this budget. There's quite a few new positions. We've taken, again, each year we look at our long-term temporary employees that don't appear to be long-term any, or temporary anymore. They're, they're here year after year. We had three that we felt needed to become, see if I can get the popping to stop here, three that needed to become permanent. We'll show you those. There's 24 new positions, but really, it's only 21. Three of these are the safer fire grant employees that we did not receive, the eight, of the eight we did not receive, council added the five in the middle of the year in '23, and those are in this budget. But the three that were safer, they're in there again for '24 as safer, and the fire department is pursuing that grant again. The '24 budget also includes quite a few increases. I mean, there's inflation, there's increases in power, there's additional training that needs to happen through public safety, public works, there's additional fees, and we're going to talk about those as we go through this. But I wanted to prepare everybody as we move forward.
Councilman Moore.
What do you mean by increases in power?
Power cost, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Cost of electricity, cost of gas, all utilities are going up.
That's fine. I just didn't know what you meant by the word power.
Sorry.
All right. Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
By the way, everyone, our computer system isn't working too well today, so that's why you're seeing these white flags being waved.
It's not surrendering.
Can I get one?
Mark, I have a question. You talk about increases. Could you touch upon the influence of growth in our community in these increases?
Sure. Councilmember Rusing. Obviously, the additional positions are needed because of the additional growth as well as, you know, as patrol routes extend for public safety, you have additional utility and gas costs and those type of things. So growth does play a role in the ongoing operating cost. Of course, growth also does contribute some revenue to those costs.
Thank you.
Sure. And again, there's other, like I say, a lot of other increases related to energy costs and other things that we saw go up. Capital is about $111.9 million this year, and we'll go into that as we go through this as it relates to projects starting this year. The full six-year or five-year capital plan is out there in that book, a lot of detail. But this, for this presentation, we'll be looking at projects that are starting this year and proceeding, and a lot of the capital will be discussed on the second day. The second day will be made up, hopefully, of only the fire department, public works departments, all those, as well as the, sorry, as well as the airport, which are all our very heavy capital funds. Again, you know, if, if the fun and excitement just gets too much today, we might have to push one or two of the departments that are scheduled towards the end into the next day. But I'll let council make that call. I could stay here all night. So of the positions that were moved from temporary to permanent, there were three, as we said. Community development had a planner that's been a long-term temporary planner going to permanent, as well as administrative specialists, and public works had an office assistant. Again, the, the additional cost to move an employee from permanent, or whatever, say, full-time temporary to permanent is really just, they get paid holidays now, and they also accrue PTO. If you're working 40 hours a week, you already get state retirement and health insurance and all those other things. So the additional cost to make them permanent is relatively minor.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. Mark?
Yes, sir.
What, can you give me a better understanding? Is this, is this the same amount of planners we have currently? We're just changing their, their work status classification?
We had one planner, and I looked at there, we had one planner, and this was a, this was a temporary planner that was helping that one planner. So with this change, we will have two permanent.
So a total of two planners?
Two planners.
Okay.
I'm looking for the not. In addition to George, but we don't count George.
George doesn't count.
No.
Good to know. George does count. So we're going from one, one planner plus kind of a.
Super.
A planning mensch.
Manager.
And then, yeah, so to two.
Chelsea will come up and explain it all.
Thank you, Chelsea.
Yeah. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So to answer Mayor Protem's question, we have currently one community planner and another, the temporary position was both an admin role as well as HP. That transition happened last November. So this proposition before you in this budget is to make that HP role a full-fledged planner role that will take on more planning responsibilities as well as the, the HP.
And just to clarify, historic preservation.
Yeah. HP is historic preservation specialist.
And, and I guess in that same component, are all these folks engaging in plan review at this point too now?
Yes.
Okay. And that's, and you, so that's, this will aid in that plan review process in theory as well?
Yes, it will.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any more questions on these temp conversions? If not, we'll take a look at the, the permanent positions that are in this budget. We had six in fire, and again, three of those are just carryovers. The other three is an, is an operating chief position, which Chief Holger felt all these were important, as well as a wildland risk reduction manager and an admin specialist. There were seven police positions, five police officers, a new school resource officer, which is in partnership with the school district where they have a grant that will pay 75% and then we will pay the 25% out of the general fund. And then we have a new sergeant, which is being funded by the Smart and Safer Fund, which is.
Councilman Moore.
Where's the new school resource officer going to be assigned?
I believe it's the, we have Mile High Middle School.
Okay. Thank you.
Down over there. And the sergeant is being funded by the Smart and Safe Fund, which is the money the police department gets from the marijuana tax. Any more? I saw some questions kind of there, but all right. Public Works has eight positions because we like them the best. They got the most, traffic engineer tech, as well as a waste water maintenance specialist, and then six solid waste equipment operators. And again, this goes into that continual dealing with the inability to keep people in those roles and not being able to provide any rest to the ones that are in it, having to work excessive overtime. Any other questions on public works? If not, we'll go to the other. We had a safety coordinator, which actually was a position brought forward by public works, and we, we thought it was such a great idea. We thought that position should not only be for public works, but for the, for the city as a whole because we have CDLs everywhere and we have construction crews and facilities and other things. So the position was brought into the budget and put in risk to help public works as well as the city as a whole. And the other kind of citywide help, one is another human resource business partner, again, because of the excessive turnover and those things that is in there, and another information technology specialist.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
On our slide number seven, we show eight total public works personnel broken down into five different titles, and this screen only shows three. And also in the other category, we show three titles here, and our package shows four.
The slides you got earlier were for council. They were to answer questions that some council had expressed as into what positions had been requested and what were part of the budget. So that's why those are on your slide. The slides here are just showing the proposed city manager budget, and you'll notice it, it is eight. Yes, it's only showing the three positions because those other two did not get put in, included in the budget.
So that's the difference between requested and included?
Correct. And again, that was brought forward to answer mainly a question from Mayor Protem Montoya, who wanted to know what the overall requests were in relation to what was approved. And again, that's not part of the presentation that's up on the screen, but that was part of yours.
Thank you.
Let's see, that's an arrow. Let's try this button. All right. Here's the exciting part. I know you guys were all waiting for the reveal, as it were. Let me get to my notes here. As you'll notice, we have a significant increase in our operating budget, 15.2%. We, now, the operating budget is actually all three of those items, but those other two items we break out because they're anomalies to ongoing operations, so they don't really help with any trend comparison. Why is it 15.2%? Why is it 16 million more? And again, there's, there's a lot included in this budget. There's the 5% COLA that was done in November by council. There's the finishing of the COLA and maintaining of the pay plan out there. That in itself represents 6.6 of the 16 million. We have new positions that are over $2 million of that 16 million. We have additional debt service. You might recall there's a little capital project going on in water out towards the airport that we just entered into a second loan, another $35 million loan for that $65 million project. Well, that's going to take about another $2 million in debt service this next year. So that's in the operating budget as we move forward. Water resources in looking to update the numbers for the Big Chino construction of the pipeline. And again, that's going to, that's another 1.2 million in that operations. It's not really capital. There's significant uncertainty about the actual construction of that, so we really can't capitalize these costs to upgrade, update plans that were done 16 years ago or 15 years ago.
Mark, regarding PSPRS, as you and I both know, the investment team dramatically underperformed against their expected rate of return, and I know they have a smoothing option in their planned extension of payments to member PSPRS cities and municipalities and other things. So isn't there going to be some impact this year?
Of the failure to meet the benchmark?
Right.
Well, yes. Yeah. Anytime there is failure to meet the benchmark, there will be an impact. Yes, they do have a smoothing.
Right.
To even that, that trend out. Obviously, last year, they had a negative loss. This year, I believe they're, they're probably not negative, but they're not, probably not going to achieve the 7.2 that they were projecting. But again, the year before that, they had a 23%, 24% rate of return.
Right.
So pensions, all, you know, obviously, actuaries are done on the average of those type of things.
So you're anticipating that we'll maintain 100% funding in our account?
Absolutely not. Or?
Well, shouldn't we plan on spending some to keep ourselves at 100%?
Yes, Mayor. This PSPRS tax that you see up there is for the PSPRS tax that the council sunset, so that tax is gone. Any, any additional payment for PSPRS would come out of the general operations of the, of the general fund.
So we'll see that in the general fund projections?
There is the continued payment of our unfunded liability because, again, the PSPRS tax did not fully pay off the thing, the ballot language wasn't for that.
Right.
And in the fall of the year, we're planning to do a workshop on a reserve establishment of a PSPRS reserve and how we will look to be funding that and how that will be used, you know, as possibly we get our actuaries that are in a negative position. And again, actuaries will go in a negative position the same way they're going to go in a positive position and show we're overfunded. I mean, that's how pensions are a long-term proposition, and they fluctuate up and down. But we will be studying that in, in the fall, and hopefully, council will include something in their strategic plan and a policy that we can incorporate into our pension funding policy.
Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. I'd like to have, ask a question about the ARC, Annual Required Contribution that we have to make. I assume that's going to be going up, and where is that going to be funded from?
The ARC that is given to us already by PSPRS is part of our general fund. Is that the question?
Yes.
Councilwoman?
Okay. Yes. Thank you.
Yeah. It's always in our, in our general fund.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So where was I? So that's where the 16 million comes from. Also, we had solid waste fluctuations with the additional personnel, the additional truck that needs additional fuel, they need additional tipping fees. It all starts to add up. So with that, the other obvious PSPRS, as we mentioned, the tax went away, so that falls out of the expenditure budget. We have some contingency in there, not as much as we had in there last year, and we'll see that in the next few slides. And our capital budget is significantly down 11%. The contingencies, just in gross here, are the grant contingencies, and that went from five to three. We really don't anticipate, you know, with COVID further behind us, we're not anticipating too many major grants out there that we're going to be able to find that we don't already know about and are included in this. And again, we have grants that are included in this budget. This is additional grants if they happen to come up. And then the other is that contingency for whatever needs to happen around the airport or other things. So as we look at the total there, so we can get that anticipation out of the way, I wanted to look at just a few other things, and we're going to go into some detail in the general fund, which is different than we have done in years past. And this is a more extended look at our sales tax base than the report I send out every month when we get it, broken out by a few more categories. There's some combining of categories in the one that goes out. But we have a 3.13% increase, which is not bad. It is, it is great. Positive is always good and exciting. Obviously, with 7% inflation, that means economic activity is actually still down, but the revenues are still up because of the prices going up. You can see a lot of fluctuation in various areas, including hotel and motel, which represents about 3% of our, of our taxable, local taxable base. Advertising has been down for years as the world changes. You know, print advertising is less than internet advertising and other things that aren't taxable or always increase, ever increasing there. Bed tax.
That's primarily print advertising?
Yes.
Okay.
And like I said, it's, yeah. And again, I looked at the detail of it, and it is mainly just a change in the way companies advertise and the way consumers get their ads. I would expect that, obviously, to continue. It's probably not too long before I'm going to be unable to separately show it without the Department of Revenue prevents us from showing in a category that is so small that by looking at it, you could tell one or two taxpayers out of it. So I'll probably have to incorporate that in other businesses in the next year or so. Yes.
Councilman Moore.
As far as advertising, is that primarily legal notices that we have to put in the paper?
No.
Is it, are you talking advertising as marketing?
I'm talking ads in the paper. I'm talking, yeah, ads that you get in the mail.
Like the little flyers about a construction or a road being redone or?
No. This is, I'm sorry, Councilman, this is our tax base. These are what businesses are doing in the community. So this is the value packs that people mail, they are advertising for people, they have to pay tax on that.
Gotcha.
So that's what this is. This is taxable activity.
It's not, yeah.
Not at our expense. This is taxable activity.
That's confusing the two. Thank you.
And again, we're still on track. We were $2.2 billion of taxable activity in the little hamlet of Prescott of 49,000 people, which is incredible numbers. And we're on track to be close to that again this year, even though the growth is down. We are a retail center for Yavapai County, and we need to keep that in mind.
Mayor.
Councilwoman Cantelmi.
Mark, I have a question up here. So you've got a line item, rental of personal property, and then you also have the residential rental. Where in that, considering we probably have close to 300 or maybe a little less, 250 vacation rentals, where would that fall?
Vacation rentals will fall under hotel motel because it's short-term, under 30 days.
And is the rental rate on that still over 12%?
The rental, the city rental rate is the 2% TPT as well as the 3% bed tax if under 30 days, and then the other state tax. So yeah, it would be.
Around 12.75.
11.35.
Okay. Thank you.
Mark, can you describe the use tax situation there where we have a drop-off of 6%?
Yeah, that fluctuates greatly. Several things make up use tax. So businesses that buy display cases or other things from out of state and don't pay tax on them, and they bring them in, they're to pay tax on them. So if you were, I don't know, to open up a new store or store or something like that, and you brought in a bunch of cabinets and cases, you would have to pay use tax on that. I'll talk with Councilman Moore after the meeting. But also, the big part of this comes when people buy vehicles out of state, and they take in department and motor vehicle, vehicles, whether it's a car, a boat, a RV or whatever, and they take in department and motor vehicle, and based on your address, they collect the tax that you didn't pay in the other state. So we get that, and that's why it fluctuates a lot. You can see last year was up 25%, which is extraordinary. There's also use tax on other items that you don't really think about, parts that car manufacturers and put in your car for warranty repair that they don't charge, or use tax type items, the samples you get at Costco that they don't sell, they have to pay use tax on those. There's a lot of little things, but it's mainly the cars that drive the numbers in this. So people are just buying fewer cars out of state probably because there are no cars to buy. Any other questions on the tax?
Yeah. One more, if you don't mind.
Sure.
So just for the public, can you talk a little bit about the Wayfair ruling? And it is in, where is that line item right there? Online retail.
Yeah. Online retail.
That's money we would not have had in the past.
Yes, there is money in there that we would not have had in the past. The Wayfair ruling did, did add tax for any internet sales that happen within your community. Several of the large internet sellers were already paying tax. So you can't really say that that whole $70 million of activity wouldn't have happened. Part of that was happening before, it was just being reported under retail. Once Wayfair happened, Department of Revenue broke out a separate code for online retailers, and they moved those Amazons who were paying already because they had location in the state and those other big ones, they moved them from retail sales down to that online.
So what percentage would you say of that would be attributed to that? Doesn't have to be exact. Is it 50% or more?
I think probably of the, the ones that were existing probably represent 60 to 70%.
Okay.
The ones that you see, and again, I, I get through the, the sales taxpayers, there are a lot more, a lot of them, but they're all very small. You know, they're, they're little numbers, but there is a lot more, and it was a great decision for the state of Arizona. It resolved something us in tax administration have been working on since the 90s, is trying to capture these. So that is all good, and it is revenue we were losing. And again, the, the state politicians and others look at it as new revenue to the city, and it's not new revenue. It's revenue that had migrated from retail to online, and therefore, we lost. So it's a recapture of revenue. It's not new revenues, just as a technical definition.
Thank you.
Sure. Any more questions on tax? I could talk tax all day. Bed tax, we put this in here because bed tax is a big part of our discussions in here in the chambers. As we talked last year, of those of you who were awake still at that point, the, last year, the, we talked about the 1.6 million that we were, we were projecting to bring in and how that was an anomaly that was related to pandemic, shutting down of the economy, pumping of money into the economy by the government, and room rates going through the rots because occupancy. the rots because occupancy rates were really high, and that that was not sustainable, and it wasn't appropriate to assume that we're going to get 1.6 again. That said, the world has changed, inflation has happened, inflation is permanent to a big extent. It's not going to go back down on a lot of things, rooms probably being one of them, but occupancy rates will fall and room rates, nightly room rates will fall. And I think we'll settle around a 1.4 or 1.45 million a year as opposed to the 1.65. So we put this in, again, this is a schedule I think I sent out earlier this week when March came out, but I just wanted to bring it up for the public because they don't see those monthly returns. All right.
So Mark, what do you attribute the 12% drop off in March year over year?
I contribute it to what we just talked about, and that is that occupancy rates are down, people have other travel options, people, there's more rooms, so the room rates go down, rooms, ooh, sorry, regionally in Prescott Valley and here and here. The 12% is a little sharp, but also it could be related to just timing, maybe one of the big hotel years didn't file on time in March, and we'll see that corrected when we get the April returns. You know, we have anomalies like this because there aren't, you know, there aren't 1,000 people paying in this area. So if you have one of the top, you know, the top 30 not pay, it does move the number quite a bit. So we'll see as we get April, if they report their March late, it'll show up in March when I send this report out in May, June, with May's numbers, which are April's. And again, you look at the negative, but also, you know, why was July 8.3% up off of our already pretty significant number? Yeah. Any more questions on bed tax? All right. These are slides we, we do every year, just kind of as a reminder, our local community tax rates and our tax rate, again, 8.35 since we reduced it. Both our local communities are higher, and they don't provide fire or EMS service. That is on their property tax, and as you can see, their property tax is significantly higher than ours. Again, I moved the house value up to $400,000 so I could quit trying to explain where there's a $200,000 house in the community. It doesn't really change the lines of the graph, it just changes the dollar numbers.
Great.
This 101 you'll see is a slight increase from last year, and that's related to the discussion we had at the mid-year where council expressed a desire to include the, the property tax increase that was available to the community. You know, we don't, we have usually only take the new construction, all of which is relatively small, and we do accumulate 2% additional property tax that we could bring in each year. We did include that year, this year, to help pay for those additional costs in the general fund, those additional police officers, and the additional five firefighters you added. But I wanted to talk about it a little bit to make sure council was still comfortable with it. Without that cost, well, I'm sorry, without that increase, the city would levy 1,939,024. With the additional tax that we can increase, that's another 288,000. So that, that'd bring it to, to 2,227,000. So, I mean, if council, I assume is still good with the direction they gave at the mid-year, I also wanted to point out that with that increase, the fact that we are using that 2% a year that we have done, there is some additional requirements. And again, the reason it's so high at 2.6 is we haven't done a property tax increase since 2017. So with the increase, which is represented by almost, I think, yeah, $3 per $100,000 house or?
Councilmember Rusi.
$12 for your 400,000.
Excuse me, when you said we hadn't had a property tax increase since 2017, what triggered that increase in 2017?
Council giving direction that they wanted to take advantage of the property tax increase. Actually, a lot of that?
To pay for what?
What?
To pay for what?
It pays for the public safety and the other things out of the general fund. And again, they are not huge numbers, these increases, that was a 4% increase then. So that was, that was, you know, $70,000, which doesn't even pay for one officer. So it's just a way to increase our operating, recurring operating revenues in the general fund so we can include more recurring operating expenditures like police officers or firefighters or librarians or accountants, all those good things.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Tenny.
Thank you. Mark, would you mind going back two slides to the sales tax graph for me?
Boop, boop, boop.
Perfect. This is, this is one of my favorite, I love all your slides, I got to tell you. This is one of my favorites, showing that our sales tax is lower than our neighboring communities, and then the next slide as well, showing that the taxes that are paid for that go toward firefighting in our area are the lowest of our neighboring communities. It's also worth noting for the public that the same is true for our K through 12 school district. We're the lowest of the three surrounding communities. So we're really in great shape as far as that's concerned. On the one hand, on the other hand, you can, there is such a thing, and I think you're pointing that out well for us, there is such a thing as too low. If we go too low with, with the amount of revenue that we're bringing in, we're not able to meet the needs that the community demands of us in terms of public safety and roads, et cetera, et cetera.
Right, and, and again, sales tax is paid by our citizens, but also people outside.
Yes.
Property tax is paid by anybody who owns property in the city.
Right.
Obviously, those are the people who live here, but they're also the people who own land here that haven't developed it yet, that we still have to provide fire protection for wildfire control or whatever on. So there is a need for both taxes.
Mayor?
Yeah, I've always felt that that was a bit of a disconnect that we have within the city. As we know, the, really, the only places that substantial growth can occur is in the north part of the city. And as that growth actually does occur, and as we have to provide more public safety response, extending our response time, adding additional fire and police and other emergency personnel to that, then that development increases the value of those properties. But who gets the benefit of the increased value? Primarily the county. So when you see your county property taxes going up, you're seeing that increase in valuation, whether your, your current home or now additional homes are providing more county property tax. But we as a city have to provide the public safety services to do that. And when we're overly dependent, I believe, on sales tax, and we don't have some type of a balance, then we're also at the mercy of sales tax. So that's part of the economic cycles. So if you have a reduction in tourism, we'll have a reduction in TPT as well. If there's a reduction, or if we move into a recession, there's probably going to be less purchasing of discretionary products, which also reduces our sales tax revenue. But we still have the need for emergency response, and we have to be able to provide that, those services and equipment and staff and brick and mortar as we look for additional fire stations. So I think there should be an opportunity to take advantage of the increase in value by adding some of this really, really modest increases. When you look at the actual cost on your property tax bill for a $400,000 home, how much would it be?
This, this additional item is $3.26 per 100,000, so, you know, that's 13 bucks on a $400,000 house.
And I think if we look at those numbers as numbers and not necessarily as a percentage increase, then I think most people would realize that that's a very, very, very modest increase to make sure that we have a more balanced revenue stream and we can continue to provide the public safety response that everyone expects. They don't want to pay it until they call 911 and say, boy, I need these people here right now.
Yeah.
Right?
Mayor Phil?
Councilmember Rusi.
And I just wanted to also mention for the 8.35% sales tax, the community and region, we have Yavapai County's only airport that offers commercial jet service, and we also have a municipal, very popular municipal golf course, that both these things are important economically and to maintaining our quality of life.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. Mark, I have a question. If we were to go forward with the property tax levy that you're showing here, and this is probably hard to maybe determine on the fly, but what would that increase look like in, as a percentage on a regular basis if we just got, if it were to happen, you know, on a regular recurring basis and not be deferred for six years at a time?
It's 2% is what the increase is, so it would be 2% on the 2,227, so it would be, it would be, you know, 40,000 a year.
Yeah, so, so I guess what I'm getting at is, and one of the disconnects here is, for me, that I think may be important, is that the cost of things in the last six years have gone up dramatically, the cost of things in the last year have gone up dramatically. And so it, that results in a kind of a ripple effect for the city. We have to pay people more to stay here, we have to do inflation adjustments for wages. When fire trucks come before us to be purchased, they start out at, you know, 1.3 million, and then quickly escalate to 1.8 million, which is nobody's fault, that's just the way the market works. And so I think in some ways, this is not even, this is an increase that's not even designed to really keep pace with inflation realistically.
I mean, yeah, you're absolutely right, Mayor Protem. It's the legally allowed, which has no correlation to what the government actually needs.
I appreciate the clarification, Mark, thank you.
And again, I brought it up, and I'm spending so much time on it, not just because it's fun to talk about, but I wanted to be clear to the council that if we do proceed, which I, I would recommend we do, and I know council mentioned it at the mid-year to proceed, we will do the truth in taxation notices, which are quarter page ads in the newspaper. And then we will have a public hearing on June 27th, and after that public hearing, I mean, I know a lot of our votes have been roll call because of our system, but this one will have to be a complete roll call vote where each council member has to vote yea or nay whether to proceed with it. The notice in the paper will look like this, it'll be a quarter page ad, not in the legals, but in the, in the body of the paper, showing that we're having a 14.86% increase. And again, that's, the mayor's point is, the percentage is misleading, sorry, the wording is required by law, and again, which bears nothing, but you can see it's only raising the rate from 21.94 in the second paragraph there, I didn't highlight that one, to 25.2, which is 3.26, $3.26 per 100,000. And again, I guess there's still $100,000 houses because that's what the law requires us to put it on. So I just wanted to be clear on those things, as well as, you know, and more to your point, Mayor, you know, in, in 2014, things were not great, you know, we had just come out of the Great Recession, it was just council decided they wanted to use up the levy that we haven't, hadn't taken since 2007, I think, or 2006. So we had almost an $8 increase per $100,000 house. But this ad read that it was a 37% increase in the property tax, and that, that caused a little frustration by the people just because they saw that, that number and missed the rest of the numbers. At that point, council gave us direction the next year, let's just do it every year, let's do the 2% every year. So we did 2% in 2015, and then it was decided, oh, we don't want to talk about this every year, so let's do it every other year. So in 2017, we did four, and then we haven't done it since then because of direction of council and direction of city management. So there you go, there's your history lesson and, and the sad fact of Arizona law. Any more questions on property tax? You guys good with still leaving it in and proceeding forward?
Thanks, Mayor.
Councilman Chishka.
So Mark, back in the early 2000s, and I think I've talked to you about this in previous meetings, back in the early 2000s, the state actually limited us to the base by which we could increase taxes, right?
We were already limited to a base, based on previous law, but in 2006, the legislature, through their infinite wisdom, which we talk about often, decided to put on a ballot issue, an issue to limit everybody's levy to the last year. And the city of Prescott council at the time had not felt a need to, they felt, sales tax growth was strong at that point, we were looking at double digit every year, and they felt that was a better way to pay for services. So we had accumulated quite a amount, about double what our levy was in capacity. And the legislature with sending that one thing to the ballot ruined that, took off a million dollars. Our levy now would be 4 million a year, which would be a lot better to be able to supplement the sales tax to provide the basic services. So, you know, are they ever going to do that again? Who knows, but, who knows?
Well, I think one of the issues for a lot of folks that are moving here is that they come from high property tax areas where the city actually levies a huge property tax.
You're absolutely right, Councilman. And again, if you look at our overall property tax, which I, I was working with a colleague at the, at the college this morning on property taxes, so we actually polled rates. Prescott residents pay about eight point something in property tax each year, which on a $100,000 house, that's 800 bucks, $800, sorry, not bucks, dollars. So 400,000, that'd be, you know, 3,200. In Prescott Valley, because of the fire district and because of the, of the poorly run school district unlike ours.
That wasn't what I meant to imply.
Their, their rate out there, I believe, is 13 point something. So, you know, they're paying, or 11, it was 11 something, they were three points higher than us. So, you know, they're, they're paying quite a bit more on property. And, you know, you can argue all day, properties aren't, aren't the same value out there as they are in town. That's really neither here nor there. I mean, Mayor Protem.
You know, Mark, on that point, I would, I have a friend of mine who owns a commercial property out in Prescott Valley, and it's not a mirror image of the commercial property I own, but I was talking to him about property tax, and I said, oh yeah, I've got to pay my commercial property tax, and I told him what I owed, and he said, oh, that's your total bill? And I said, I said, yeah, it is. And he said, no, 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 you mean that's your first half. Because he thought it was so much, it was so much lower than what he was paying, and that, I think that's a really important point to drive down, is not only are we lower in retail tax, but we're lower in property tax pretty dramatically, in my opinion.
It is very dramatically, and again, I can imagine where your person, your friend's property is, because there's one commercial district out there that they built a CFD in that adds 9% hit, so instead of 11, it's 20 at that location, which is unbelievable. All right, so we will proceed with leaving that tax in as we move forward in the budget process. The next few slides, and I apologize, they're very number intensive, and I know the council loves those, but the public doesn't always. But I wanted to, I wanted to make a point because, you know, there was a lot of talk this year at the legislature, and there was a lot of talk all around about how much revenue cities were getting and how they should be willing to change their tax base. And also, as we look at these things, you have to look at where can I pay for firemen and policemen and accountants out of, and that's recurring money, your recurring money that's going to be there every year because, you know, accountants are okay with it, but policemen want to be paid every year. So I thought I should give you more detail on the general fund because that's where all this happens. So we split revenues up, we split our operating revenues up into a couple different areas, recurring, which means it's reasonably expected that though, and again, nothing's guaranteed. As we talked about, there's a recession and these things can change. But looking at revenues that we would expect to continue on each year are the top part of the sheet under the word recurring. I cleverly hit it. We have local taxes, sales tax, this is sales tax on everything but construction, that's our property tax, which we, so you, people so graciously agreed to let us try to increase to the 227, 227, 2227. The franchise tax, which is a tax on our three franchises in the city. And then our state share of state income tax, which is, of course, a percentage of the income tax. And then the state privilege tax has a recurring component to it as well, and motor vehicle is relatively re- And motor vehicle is relatively recurring because cars wear out and people have to buy new cars. So that stays relatively stable. And then there's some minor miscellaneous ones. Great revenue growth this year. I'm, I'm totally happy with the revenue growth. I mean, there's always needs. There's always, you could say, oh, I wish it was 10%. But, you know, 5.7 in the middle of a tightening economy is nothing to be upset with. So we went from 39.8 to 42 million. The non-recurring revenues, I want to talk about those, local taxes. What's, what's not recurring? Anybody? There's extra credit for this. I didn't bring candy. I should have. Privilege tax, what is a non-recurring component of privilege tax? Construction. You can't, you can't build a house more than once unless it burns down. But that's another issue. So we consider that non-recurring. We pull it out of those calculations. And the reason we do that is, we still use it. It's still great money. But it's used for the not, the stuff you use your savings account for you. You know, the fire truck you gotta buy, the, those type of things. State shared revenue, income tax, these are huge numbers I'm showing here. So I wanted to talk about them because the first one, the 2.7 million, is related to the COVID pandemic. Because state, the state deferred filing deadlines for income taxes. So that, therefore, it pushed money from one year to another year, which caused our 23 state share of that messed up year to be higher. So that's great. We got the money eventually and all that. But we don't want to call it recurring because it's going to fluctuate down. But this year, it's up to a 5.7, which is the money that the legislature tried to give away with the food tax elimination and those type of things. The problem with that is the reason it's so high is because when the state moved their income tax from 2%, or from what the variable rate to the 2.5, they increased our share of the state income tax from 15% to 18%, which is great. And that, we appreciate if they want to be benevolent. We love it. But don't hurt our budgets. So they did that. But because of the timing of all this, the 18% went into effect in 2004. But the 2.5% lower income tax collections won't go into effect, start going into effect until 2005 and fully in effect in 2006. Because these are based on fiscal year.
You're talking about 2026?
Yeah, I'm sorry. You know, it's, I, I forget what century I'm in. That's the problem with doing this so long. Sorry about, thanks for pointing that out, Mayor. So that's the 6 million that the legislature's like, well, you don't need the food tax. Look at this. Yeah, this year, I agree. We don't need the food tax, but we're sure going to need it next year when our state share of income tax starts going down because income tax collections are down.
Mayor Pro Tem.
So, Mark, do you have an idea of what that number will level out to then? I mean, I know that's probably, you don't have a crystal ball, but I mean, do you have a guess?
Yeah. Yeah, my guess is up there. I think the number will level out to, I'm showing 6.9 in recurring income tax. I think if we grow that at 2, at 5% for two years, that's probably where we'll end up. And again, we're going to bring these recurring revenues up slowly as these non-recurring go down. And hopefully, when the one on the bottom hits zero, the other one will not have to fluctuate down sharply. It will continue on. Again, if everybody does their taxes correctly and nobody files a late return or anything, this will, this will level out between, you know, now and two years from now. But, you know, we're still getting PSPRS tax because people are still filing late returns for last year. So. So wanted to be clear, it's, it's not a bad thing that we have so much non-recurring. It's, it's, it's just something that needs to be explained. And it's awesome. We got 8.7 million this year that we can use to take care of some of these huge capital needs we have, which we're going to talk about here in a second. So with that, the schedule here is the operating cost of the general fund. So the, the recurring revenues are 42 million. Of the recurring revenues go to offset those ongoing operating costs. These, these costs for each department are net of cost recovery and they are net of program revenues. What's a program revenue? Program revenue is a building permit. It's a plan check fee. It's a rental at a park trailhead. It's a CFD fee that I charged to do the CFD work for the community facilities district we still have. It's all those things are netted out here so that we can see what each of these departments' impact is on that recurring tax base. Because that's important. When the legislature starts talking about cutting a million dollars, where is it going to come from? And again, we, yeah. So with that, you can see we're in good shape. Recurring revenues still are 102,000 in our projections. Again, projections are projections and not reality. And our projections higher than ongoing operating cost net. So 102,000. So here's a graph. 74.3 of this tax base, of the recurring tax base goes to public safety, 74.3. And as you can see, the rest of it goes about where you'd expect the rest of it to go. You know, with other things that we do. So capital cost in the general fund. Again, this is my last general fund slide. And I apologize, I usually don't have this many in this thing. But I felt this was important enough since it was such a debate at the legislature this year that we make a point of it for everybody. Capital funding in a year comes from recurring revenues in excess of cost. That's that 102, you can see on the top line, 102,000. The non-recurring revenues, which are the 8, 785. Any debt issues that you might have for capital costs? And again, for that airport contingency, we have that $11 million potential debt issue. And then any available unrestricted fund balance above our required reserves, above any debt reserves that are needed is also available. You can see in 2023, it was nine, now it's eight. So where's that going? And as we go over these departments over the next four days, as we walk through all these present, our two days presentations, we will go over what these capital things are that are being proposed. But you can see, there's, there's quite a list up there. They net out. We remain with a $639,000 projected available fund balance at the end of it. So with that, I will pop back into the slides we usually show, which are more of the, the budget as a whole at the, at the citywide level. Here are revenues. Again, we've talked about the general fund ones because I wanted to emphasize, and I probably overdid it with the recurring, but I wanted to make that clear. Sales tax revenues are, are, are great. It's up 2.4, which is actually higher. Because remember, 2023, a half of that year had an additional 0.75% tax for the PSPRS. And, oh no, that's separated. I'm sorry. That's it there. And then that's right below it. Still good numbers going forward. Bed tax, we projected, as I said, 1.5 is more of a realistic point for that in, in going forward. The property tax, of course, is showing a 17% increase because of construction and those things. These are all good, good news. Franchise taxes are fluctuating great, greatly with a couple of them. So we're going up, but it's smaller. You know, power and gas are dependent on weather, you know, as to how much is sold. So how much tax we get is depending on how much is sold. Cable is more of an anomaly because people are cutting the cable, as you know. And internet service is not a taxable type thing because of interstate commerce. So once they no longer provide programming, you know, that, those numbers go down as we go. Intergovernmental, we talked about those. State shared revenues went up significantly on license and permits, so on. Fines and forfeitures, continue the slide we've seen. You know, just based on the change in the way they're, the judiciary does those. Utility services are up slightly. We will, in this budget, we are doing a rate study for water and wastewater, as well as an impact fee review. Every five years, we do it, and it's time to do it again. So we will be doing that in '24. That means that the scheduled rate increases that we have done in the past are reaching their end. Again, that's why they're relatively level. Solid Waste just did a rate study and had some pretty significant increases. So that's why you see the revenues increasing there. Excuse me, just a second. Airport is up because of additional ground leases, as well as increase in hangar lease rates, about 300,000 more, 300,000, 400,000 more there. Golf course is based on the numbers we get from Indigo. They're relatively conservative. They usually, you know, get relatively close to those. This year was a little hard. And I look, see if Joe's out here. But we had, how many days that, of wet that they couldn't play? 32 days that we couldn't play at all this year. You know, we all want the drought to end until we can't play golf. Then internal service funds, of course, have an increase because of in-maintenance costs and other things that go on there. Obviously grants, debt proceeds, these are the, this line is the debt proceeds that are scheduled, mainly WIFA, as well as some equipment leasing at our solid, our solid waste fund. And then the contingent debt service. Looking at the expenditures, we see significant changes. Again, remember, we had a significant cost related to payroll, keeping the pay plan in place. So we only look at the really big ones. Obviously fires up because of the new positions, as well as the new, the five new, well, they were in there before. So it's the new positions, as well as increase in paramedic pay, increase in overtime, some training, equipment, those things. Police is up. New positions primarily there, as well as, I believe, some increased training. Public Works is up relatively significantly at, I believe, what is that, 9 million? Increase related to the new positions. Remember, they had a lot of solid waste truck operators. They had increase in their tipping fees with increased, anticipated increase flow through the transfer station, increased cost in snow removal materials. Updating the Big Chino Water Ranch as part of their operating budget, that was significant, as well as increased training for the CDL and the other items that are out there. Again, they can go into more detail on those and, and the sequel, the day two of our training, or the workshop when, when they do their presentation. Other numbers, let's see. Fleet and facilities had increases in power and gas and maintenance equipment. Airport had, airport had increases in legal services, hangar maintenance and winter storm management.
Can you talk about regional communications?
Oh, I missed it. Regional communications of 14 vacancies. They had 14 vacancies this year when we did the projections, which caused us to project those at midpoint. 14 is a lot. So that little bit can move it. They also had replacement of monitors, Z-tron software and 911 software upgrade in there. Again, of 49% of that is paid by our partners and only, and the remainder is paid by us.
So we should be in pretty solid shape this coming year with all of those upgrades and improvements? Or are we expecting that all of those positions are going to be filled? And will that increase the total cost for PRCC?
Well, again, those, those positions are projected in that number. So when projected over that, as to whether we can expect them filled, I would look to my, my friend Deputy Chief Brumbilla or Chief Bonnie, if she's there. She's hiding behind the pole.
Yeah, she's behind the post.
Yeah, she's hiding behind the pole.
Good police tech.
Yeah.
I would anticipate that we have them filled, yes, sometime next fiscal year.
I know. I was talking to the Chair of the Board of Supervisors this morning. And they were proposing possibly studying combining county communications and dispatch with the city to see if there could be some economies of scale and more effectiveness by having one combined organization rather than two separate. Because obviously, we're competing for staffing. So they raise their rates and some of our people move, or they recruit somebody that we want, and then we have to respond. And it becomes, at least from managing staff costs, an escalating challenge rather than trying to work together to see if we could have some economies of scale. I thought that was probably worth studying.
Yeah, that's, that's the first I've heard of that. But we're always open to collaboration and looking at ways that we can save money and increase and enhance efficiency in customer service.
Future project.
It's a good response.
All right. With that, I have the fund balances of our funds out there. Just to briefly go through it, again, we've talked about the general fund, the 639,000 and pointed out, and I'll point it out here again, that maintains our 11.5 million reserve, operating policy reserve, which is, excuse me, 20% of the, of the operating revenues. It also reserves some for long outstanding obligations. Streets fund, you can see, see they have their policy, which is at 10%. And the significant money for street projects as we move forward. Transient lodging has a little money accumulated. Again, we can talk about, we got more to talk about on transient lodging later.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mayor. Mark, maybe I missed it. But do you have a projection on what the cost of that contingency will be, the debt servicing?
Yeah, it's right here on this, this slide. And it was on an earlier slide as well. It would be 885,000 a year for 25, or for 20 years.
20 years. Okay, thank you.
Is what we projected. Again, that's an estimate on interest rates, which are changing daily.
Yeah. Do you know that estimate? What, what would that interest rate be marked at? Do you have an idea?
It is all in cost, I believe, at like around 5%.
Okay.
And again, all in because it's not just loan. It's, we got to bond counsel. We got to have legal opinions, underwriters and all that when we issue debt.
Thank you.
The one thing to point out here is, you'll notice there is a negative in the specific program balance with, we talk about our enterprise funds. Again, that's always a concern. But again, we're, we're projecting this against estimated capital projects that will get done next year, as well as the fact that we will be doing a rate study on water and wastewater this year, which will address any deficit that, that may be there. So it's nothing to worry about, especially at that relatively low level. But I did want to point out that that negative is not great, but it's not that bad. And we will take care of it through the rate studies this next year. So the remainder of the presentation is different. As you recall in the past, we would just, from here, go through a long list of capital items and show you some pretty pictures and we'd go home. Today, with the new approach with the AEL, the approved expenditure list, and also the fact that I think it's important that we keep in mind where that, that recurring tax base is used to fund. So that when our friends at the legislature decide to cut 4 million out of it, you will know what that means. You know, where do you got to cut? Well, who's mostly funded by it? Who's least funded by it? So with that, there are other items in this section that we're not going to spend a lot of time on. They're basically the captions that have been in the budget book that you see every year when you read our lovely budget book. And they're just provided as kind of a public information, some way to evaluate the key items in relation to level. So with that, we'll start with the most important department in the City of Prescott, and that is finance. The finance department is funded primarily by enterprise funds because a big part of our operation, of course, is utility billing. As well as we are a cost recovered fund, the remainder of us are cost recovered because we work for debt issues in, in, in utilities and we work on rate studies and, and all manner of issues. Tax base, 17% of our overall budget is the amount that comes from that recurring tax base. Not a huge amount. Again, the graphs are kind of what we want to do. This portion here, they're showing the last, the three-year thing with the, the budget for '24 and '25 projected and the actual, is just kind of to give you a level of, how big is our finance department? 2.7 million. When you figure all the cost and other contracts we have to pay for software systems and those things. things. This is our list of key items that we'll be looking at for each department on this slide. It talks about the significant expenditures, the items that we are proposing to put on the expend, annual expenditure, I'm sorry, approved expenditure limit. I'm not sure who came up with that name, but we're going to go with it this year. We'll see where we go next year. So in my department, in, in our independent, it was a huge contract. It's about a hundred-and-fifty-five, hundred-and-sixty thousand over a three-year period. Next year, it looks like it'll be fifty thousand, but we enter into a three-year contract. And we just did that with Baker Tilly, who's within the top ten of CPA firms internationally. They, they partnered with Henry and Horn out of the Valley, and they took them over. So that's how they got to bid on a little town like Prescott. We have our ERP system, annual contract, a hundred-and-fifty-five thousand. That's cost recovered. All of our things are cost recovered over that broad percentage pie you saw earlier. Printing and mailing of utility bills is a huge part of what we do. Obviously, we bill thirty thousand people a month. You know, that's three-hundred-and-sixty thousand bills a year. They do not all go out in the mail. We are up to almost a third that are emailed. And we're going to, we keep pushing that and trying to get more people to take it by email and come up with paying online or paying through auto pay. Which brings us to the next item, our credit card fees. Obviously, when you're bringing in seventy million dollars and a lot of people are paying online, we have credit card fees. Kind of a cost of doing business for giving the convenience of, of the, of the payment for their, our customers. So this is what an AEL will look like for each of the departments. And, you know, and at this point, it would be council's job, I guess, to say, no, we, when you bring the, the annual ERP maintenance contract, we want to see that separate. We're uncomfortable approving it kind of engrossed in here. Are there any of these items council is uncomfortable being on the AEL?
Okay, that's. Hearing none?
Yeah.
I guess you're okay to proceed.
All right. And that's probably the last time we'll take the time to ask that. So if you do see one on our next, on our next slides, please speak up, because not everybody's is as little as mine. City Court, we met with the judge, had a great budget meeting with the judge, and he wanted me just to run through these, and they don't have that many things, so we can cover them. They're a big hit to our tax base. Again, their program revenues, those fines and forfeitures are a portion of theirs, brochure PDs are a small part of their, of their budget. They do have some grants and other things, as you can see in the special revenue fund. Not a, not a huge department at around almost eight-hundred-and-ninety, thirty-nine, my eyes. That didn't help.
Eighty-nine.
So these are their items, and they have a recurring IGA with the county. It's about the only key item they have. Everything else they have is pretty day-to-day type of operations. So we would put that on the AEL, unless, of course, it's a new contract, which the, the council will have to sign, because it's an IGA, which has to be approved separately by council. We also, on these items, are including departments' grants. Not really, I mean, we can talk about them if you want to talk about them, but it's more informational for the public and for the council. We get a lot of questions, how come you guys don't get more grants? How come you don't get more grants? We get a lot of grants. We get hundreds of thousands of grants every, every year, a lot at the airport. We get a lot through WIFA. We get a lot of grants. They're all on our financial report, which is on our website, under cityprescott-az.gov. City government, our government leadership, and then under financial CR, our financial statements. And there's an annual schedule of, of, a schedule of federal assistance on their, our CFA.
Do we get any kind of reports from city court, court on their revenues, collections, fines, et cetera? I know we had to kind of write off a number of, a substantial amount last year.
We can get whatever reports you want. They're part of the budget, again, three-hundred thousand, I think, is our projected fines. This year is not a huge number. Is there a report you're wanting to see? They are, we are bringing forward as part of the budget process, a new fee, a docket fee, which you will be seeing in the next several weeks to help recover more of the cost of the legal department and city court.
Well, I, for one, would like to see maybe an ongoing report to see if any of those docket fees are substantially making the delta between cost and, and revenue generated through fines and collections less broad.
We would be glad to include, we will add a, a recap of the court's financial cost and revenue to the bi-monthly council report that we send out. We'll add that to the finance section, so that you can see that information, if that will work for them.
Joe, do you have any comment on that?
I don't. I, I think that the docket fee, which we don't currently have, will help and, and will add to that amount. I'll say also that the court issues lots of fees and fines, and their revenue is only a small percentage of that that state law dictates. So that's not everything that they take in from people who commit criminal acts, it's just their percentage of it. But as, in terms of the report, I think that, that's great.
And that, and that's an excellent point. You know, we might bring in twenty bucks for a parking ticket. We only keep like eight, because the state.
I know, I looked at that about five or six years ago, because there were people in the community said, oh, you're just trying to give us those tickets to increase revenue. And when I looked at what the city actually keeps, it's a very small percentage of that total cost.
It is.
Yeah.
Mayor, may I ask a question?
Certainly, Councilwoman can tell me.
Thank you. Do you see that on your screen when I press that? Is that not working?
Well, I actually saw that one, and I wasn't looking at the screen, since I think you and Councilman Shishka are the only one that show up.
Okay. Well, I have a question about WIFA.
Please proceed.
You mentioned, okay, thank you. So Mark, explain to me with the WIFA loan, if we receive, and I'm just asking, if we receive a grant, is that grant then applied to a loan that we currently have, or does that sit and wait for us to apply it to maybe a, how, how would the grant be applied to what we already owe?
That, that's a great question with not a clear answer, but let me try. So we recently, you authorized Public Works to apply for a WIFA grant. That's a separate item. The WIFA loans are partially funded through EPA. We get a subsidized interest rate. They give us the, the triple-A bond rating for the period, the term, less a percentage. So we pay less than a triple-A bond rating.
I think that.
On our interest rate.
That was three-point-six percent, I believe, if I remember.
It depends on the day.
Okay.
I mean, these things fluctuate by the day. So they also provide forgiven principal on, on loans. And you remember the last one we did, the thirty-five million? I think we had a million something, million and a half that was forgiven principal. So that means if we, when we pay the bond off, we pay it all the way off, they will forgive the last million and a half, or whatever that number was. The way the WIFA works as a revolving fund, even though that thirty-five million is a loan, big part of loan, it still counts as a grant, because the EPA gave money to WIFA to be able to do that. There's pass-through as a grant to us with the required repayment into the fund to provide future monies. So that's how they give us that lower interest rate subsidized. So even though we're only going to get one-point-five off on that grant, we may need to show whatever portion of that loan comes from that EPA funding. Even though we're going to have to pay it back, we have to show it as a grant in our CFA.
So it always comes off at the end? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, if you don't pay, if you don't, if you don't pay off your loan, they won't give you the unforgiven principal.
No, the only reason I was asking is because many loans will have a prepayment penalty. And I think I talked to you earlier about this with the WIFA loans. So if they had taken off the grant as it comes in, theoretically, our interest would have gone down.
Yeah, again.
But they don't do that.
I apologize, this is so confusing.
Okay.
But they, it's the way the EPA put it together. The two things really aren't connected. And again, what we have to report has to do with the money that the, that WIFA got from the EPA that will stay in the revolving trust, but is currently held by us in a loan, and we will repay. We also get the forgiven principal, which is part of that amount, but not the amount in total.
Okay, well, that's as clear as mud. Thank you.
I know, it's, yeah.
Thanks for asking.
I don't get it, and I'm an accountant. Any other questions, I can give a vague and obscure answer to. So next, our lovely city clerk department. She is one of the cost-recovered departments. All the administrative departments in the general fund, we cost-recover, because, believe it or not, the city clerk does a lot of work for Public Works and for the airport and for all these other departments, as does the city manager's office and so on. So fifty-three percent, only twenty-four percent, which is a number here I wanted to key on, comes from that revolving recurring tax base. So again, when you say, all right, they're cut a million bucks, everybody's got to give up, you know, ten percent of their budget, you know, and she gives up a, a thousand dollars, it's only going to help by two-hundred-and-fifty, but it's going to have a big impact on the service level. All right. And again, to reference city clerk, in total, a lot of it is related to election, as we look at her totals. And then she has one item, and she is here for comment to the next several departments. Just wanted me to speak, because there isn't like a lot of exciting stuff to talk about. So election is a thing that she would like on the AEL. This will enable her just to go out and get her transcription contracts and her printing contracts and all that, without having to get it through a schedule to get it on an agenda type of thing. Any questions? Again, we're not going to query every time. Legal was the same way. Joe loves budgeting. He loves his budget, but he wanted me to talk you through it. Again, he's a cost-recovered department, just like the clerk, twenty-four percent comes from that recurring tax base. He has a higher number there. Someday, we'll have the technology where it'll actually update my screen at the same time. Two-point-six million budget. He actually didn't have any items of the level that needed to be on the AEL, so he has no items for the AEL. City Council, again, is a cost-recovered, because you guys work on everybody, so twenty-four, five percent of you come from that tax base. Council's budget, operating budget is two-ninety-three, just almost three-hundred thousand. Again, not a lot, it's a little higher. We have some additional cost in there for possibly various things this coming year. And the, the lobbying contract with Barry is the one item that, that I think it was Nettie who said, we need to put that on the AEL. No, I think it was the manager's office. So without any, and again, this doesn't mean that Barry isn't going to come and give the council legislative updates. It just means we don't have to deal with bringing the contract forward through the thing. Barry, obviously, will still come and give the legislative updates to the council. All right, we're moving. We have the city managers, which has a different cost distribution. I just wanted to briefly explain. Thirty-one percent is what hits that tax base, and why is that? City Managers Department is made up of a lot of little, let's call them sub-departments, IT, HR, economic development, and general fund, or tourism, all across the city, tourism. IT is fully cost-recovered, which means finance is cost-recovered, so the revenue centers will pay a portion of their CPA firms' cost, as they should. In the general fund, the police will not pay a portion of my cost. It is shown in finance for the general fund departments. IT and HR are not that way. They are fully cost-recovered, so their costs are not only charged to the other revenue centers, but they're actually charged out to the other departments in the general fund. It was a differential that was determined by the city manager long in the past, and I've forgotten which one. But that's the way we've been doing it, and that's the way we're doing it in twenty-four. Might not be the way we do it after that. We'll have to evaluate the effectiveness of it. But that is why these numbers are a different percentage, because more of their base costs are spread out because of IT and HR. This is the first department that actually has capital. That's exciting. So we do draw a separate operating line for you, so you can see a trending of the operating costs. And again, that's, you know, that's, city managers are, of course, paid appropriately high, but that's why it's so high at seven million, is because it includes all those sub-areas, and IT is a very big sub-area of that component. Which brings us to the list, which will probably require some description from IT and economic development for the next two slides.
Going back, going back to the city managers detail there, we have a reduction in capital outlay by three-point-eight billion.
Yeah, that capital outlay was related to the project on the creek over here. That was run through the city managers' department. Tyler ran with that.
So now that it's funded and grant-approved, there shouldn't be any additional costs, right?
Right, it's supposed to be finished this fiscal year.
Right.
In twenty-twenty-three. I think there might, there obviously is some little amount of capital there in twenty-four, but that was the big amount.
Got it. Thank you, Mayor. I have a same question.
That explains it. Thanks.
And does IT want to talk about their items, or John Heine, his items? We'll do IT first.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Nate Keegan, IT Director. The first item on that list is a overall radio system upgrade, and what that's targeted toward is replacement of equipment, just getting old. It also removes the Prescott Regional Communications Center as a point of failure in our radio system, so it makes it a more resilient radio system. And the third part there is that it, it addresses the fact that, well, when the radio system we have now is laid out, North Prescott was not as busy, South, East Prescott was not as dense. So it's a fixed point in time. So what this does, addresses Prescott's actual footprint, and it sets us up for the next ten to fifteen years of infrastructure needed for that system, which benefits not only our police and fire, but it benefits our regional partners that come into Prescott to operate, CAFMA, ambulance companies, whoever it may be. Second item there, Amigus Tank Tower. That is a fifty-year-old tower that was put in in nineteen-seventy-two. I was not around at that time, but I'm pretty sure engineering standards between then and now, probably not the same. So we'd like to proactively replace that tower before it gets to the point where it's just too old and we could have something happen to it.
Where is that tower?
It's up the Amigus Reservoir, just north of the high school. So it'd be Douglas and Northside Avenue.
Okay.
You can see it as you drive around down Willow Creek. If you're eagle-eyed, you'll see it. And the last item actually can be removed, because it's redundant, which I just emailed Jody about, based on the first item going in. So we don't need to do the North Prescott Radio Repeater site, because it's incorporated in the larger overall project. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So that's a net reduction?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And our, yeah, and our capital thing, and we'll, we'll reflect that when this comes back to council.
I like it.
Okay. All right. Is, oh, there he is. Come on, John. We have these three items, John, just for you to prepare. We have this one, which I'm sure you saw, for you to talk to.
Yeah. I mean, I'm certainly happy to answer questions, but just going through the list, the Arizona Communications Network Agreement was approved by council, three-year agreement that was approved earlier this year. And the Prescott Downtown Partnership Summer Concert Series was also approved by council earlier this year as well. And the Chamber of Commerce Christmas City Support, fifty thousand dollars, I think that was reviewed and approved as well. So these will be recurring expenses, and I think they certainly make sense on the AEL, but if there's any, you know, for example, if Prescott Downtown Partnership comes back next year and asks for another ten thousand dollars, we're going to bring that contract back to you for discussion.
But if it renews at the same, Mayor Protim, or it would not?
So I have a question about the process with AEL i- in this context. So let's imagine the, the contract for the Arizona Communication, Communications Network, that is scheduled to expire in, like, whatever the end of the term is. When that comes back for renewal, or if, I guess, in the event that.
See where you're going.
That. When that comes back for renewal, or if, I guess, in the event that, that, you know, the end of that contract comes, will it come, it's not like it's going to be in the AEL forever necessarily, right? Like, at some point, you will come back and say, all right, we've, we've run through the course of this contract, where we've looked at maybe a new vendor, or we've looked at like a new terms of this contract, cart prices have gone up, or we maybe have more competitive, then that will come back. Is that, am I understanding correctly?
Or an increase or a change in the contract.
Sure. Yeah, if I could address just kind of the AEL, and again, you know, the AEL was a, was a settlement, if you will. Most communities in Arizona are at the point that they will provide the council a study packet, like we did, with their significant items on them, what are in the budget, and then they will do a budget presentation much more summarized than we're doing here today. And when you adopt that budget, you are approving all those things that were key items in the budget detail study document. Since we hadn't done that, and I understand the mayor's reluctance to say, yeah, if it's in the budget, let's go for it. We, working with the mayor, decided to come up with this AEL. So it'll be in the key items. If the three, if the network, Arizona Communication Network contract, it's an ongoing expense. It's going to be around as long as staff deems it appropriate. It'll be a key item in your study pack each year, so it would be on the AEL or whatever approval. I mean, if that, and again, our goal here is to take this stuff that you look at during the budget, so why do we want to look at it during council when you could be focusing on more significant rezoning or water or airport issues?
No, I follow that, and I guess that makes sense. And I guess, what would trigger it to fall out of the AEL altogether, then?
Well, if staff decide it wasn't that effective and no longer going to be there, they would not include it in their detail of their budget submission. If it came, if the price varied more than 20%, it would, you know, come in, you know, it would be back for council for approval. But again, even if it isn't, you'll see it every year in your study pack.
That makes sense.
So you can address any concerns at that point. Councilwoman Tanny?
Thank you, Mayor. That's a super good clarification for me, maybe for all of us, that we're not, we are not approving this in perpetuity by seeing it one time right now.
Correct.
It'll come back to us each year.
It's going to be every year.
Part of the AEL is just not during the, the budget workshops, plus another time separately within our city council meetings, taking up valuable time.
Exactly. And, you know, and I mean, obviously, the goal would be to refine that study pack so you guys can review it, and we wouldn't, we could really only talk about any questions you had at this, as opposed to bringing up a long list of boring things to discuss, and then it would be approved in, in total.
Got it. Thank you for that clarification. That's super helpful, and I appreciate the process. It was explained to us well earlier, but some of us have, you know, lives in between our council meetings.
City manager.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And I think for, for really, kind of, I think the thought process around this, too, is that with recurring, these are things that are going to be recurring, these are things that are going to quite honestly be more administratively handled. So the idea is that those things that are administrative and that we can do, that, that don't take up the time of council because you've already reviewed it, you've already looked at it, you've given us approval through the process to do, we would do that. But certainly, I would be working with Mark, and I'd be working with all of you. If there was anything I felt deemed need to come back for any other reason as well, we would bring that back to council for consideration.
Very good. Any other questions or concerns on this one? All right, and then we also have the bed tax. And again, John brings this back, I believe, in August in detail, so we can wait and do it as part of that discussion, but this is the detail of the bed tax budget. Recreation Services is a little heavier into the, into the tax base. As we get into it, we will show 73% comes from that recurring tax base. Significant budget, obviously, they do a lot. They have a lot of properties to take care of and make available to the public. You can see their operating budget there and their capital outlay at 7.2 in this year. With that, we get into the key items discussion, and I would look to somebody from recreation or, ah, can we move, can we move this pillar?
Is it in the budget?
Sure.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'd be happy to go over these, each one of these, if you'd like. Some of those aren't really substantial, but I certainly would enjoy talking about the majority of those. The Glassford Dell's Regional Park is something that actually I found out today, that cost will be reduced significantly. We've got some money from the state that, that will apply towards that, so we'll make that adjustment, so that's good news.
And that's in there? How much was coming from grants and stuff?
Okay. The Granite Dell's Gateway Park, that, right now, we have a contract underway for the park planning at $360,000, so that's ongoing. We expect to have that done in, in January, and that will help us nail down the cost for the fiscal 25-year construction numbers. West Granite Creek Park Improvements is really kind of the last piece in the Granite Creek Corridor. This would be located at the end of Granite Street and across the creek from the splash pad. We're going to put some parking in there, which is much needed. That splash pad, our splash park has been a very well-visited park, and we're glad to have it in our inventory, but it needs some parking in there, and then some landscape improvements that will help tie everything together so that we've got, you know, a park from end to end that's really finished. The Parks Maintenance Shop, we, you know, we're kind of outgrowing the space that we're in. We need to add on to that Parks Maintenance Shop, which was built, I believe, in the 90s when Pioneer Park was built, so it's, it's pretty old, but in pretty good shape, but we do need a little more space. Vehicle replacements is just an ongoing thing that we've got with replacing, you know, not only our trucks and whatnot, but some of the equipment. The outdoor basketball courts, which will be starting soon, they are located at Willow Creek Park, across from the car dealerships, in a really nice area, in a growth area of Prescott, but more importantly, it's in an area that's not, you know, surrounded by neighborhoods, so it'll get a lot of activity without a lot of people complaining that it's breaking their, you know, their, the silence, I guess. The pavement preservation, again, we've got a lot of asphalt at all the parks. Pioneer Park is a huge parking lot, Heritage Park, Granite Creek Park, it goes on and on, and so that's sort of a reoccurring every, every other year, kind of a thing to stay ahead of the deterioration of those paved surfaces. This mower replacement would be replacing a mower that we got that's about six years old, I think. And then the equipment replacement includes a lot of the smaller, like the carts that we use for field preps and things like that. The last one is the Parks Maintenance Tractor. That's a little Kubota tractor. It'll help grade in fields. We can use it for grading pathways and things like that. It's a smaller Gannon tractor-type piece of equipment that'll be handy to use for a lot of different things. And then the last one is, it's a partnership with the county for a trailhead off of Williams, or Pioneer Parkway, near the intersection of Pioneer Parkway and Williamson Valley Road that will be a trailhead for the Circle Trail. The county's agreed to do the design and contribute financially to it. We will contribute financially to it. We will get a grant from the state for that. I've had the state parks director out to look at it. He thinks it's a project that will fare well in the grant process. So it's really a partnership to build a trailhead at that portion of the Circle Trail that's heavily used, and I think the important component is, for this is, it's a trailhead that will allow for equestrian parking, the longer trailers. We have very little of that, and this part of the trail system is more conducive to equestrian use, so that's kind of our project.
Is that the trailhead there by Springfield Ranch?
It'll be just, well, there'll be two trailheads. One smaller one in Springfield Ranch, which the developer has agreed to, to. This one will be further down, further down Pioneer Parkway, closer to Commerce Drive, kind of between Commerce Drive and Williamson Valley Road, on the north side of the road. And again, it's for, you know, equestrian use, that we just don't have too many of those places available.
So that'll just be a right-in, right-out off of Pioneer Parkway?
I think, that's a great question, Mayor. Actually, the county is going to create a turn lane in there.
Really?
They've got the space, and it had been kind of contemplated for that, so I worked with Don Cherry, or Dan Cherry, the Public Works Director for the county, and we came to that conclusion. We have a preliminary design on it right now. We're waiting to see, you know, how the budget goes before we move forward with final design, but we're all poised and ready to go.
Interesting. Councilwoman Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. Joe, I just have a few questions about the line item for, let me find it. Pavement preservation. I go to the P line trail every week, maybe sometimes a couple times a week. Does that include, like, striping? Is that in that budget? Because right now, you can't see the lines in that trailhead, in that parking lot. It's, they're completely not visible anymore. They've just been worn out.
Councilwoman Moore, that's a great, great observation, because that's, that's typical of what happens. That trailhead gets so much use. I think we striped it less than two years ago.
Really?
But, you know, it's not defined travel lanes and people cut across wherever the parking spots might be, so it does wear out quickly, but that's another great example of why we have to have a continuing program to, to continue to stay ahead of, you know, pavement.
Okay. Another, a follow-up question. There's a lot of quasi-parking lots for some facilities, as you know. I don't know if they were intended originally, or they just kind of gradually got developed over time, but particularly like Willow Lake Road, there's a big dirt parking lot on the east end near Brittany Drive that has boulders, and there's a parking area. And then, as you continue west on Willow Lake Road, there's another little parking area, more like a pullout where there's a gate and you can get into the, but it's, neither of those are paved. Are there any plans maybe in the future to pave, like, the larger parking lot, or to improve the other parking lot where there's a gate access?
Well, the large, excuse me, Councilwoman Moore, the larger parking lot was something that we partnered with Public Works on to use asphalt millings in there, and we'll replenish that as time goes on, but it was a great opportunity for us when they were milling Smoke Tree to take those millings and put it directly in there. Though, you're right, those are kind of, kind of like recreational trails that people go out and just start, you know, traveling the path, and pretty soon it becomes a trail.
Yeah.
That's kind of, with Brittany, that's sort of what's happened. It really isn't appropriate there from a sight-distance perspective, based on the speed for it to be an approved parking lot, but it is just sort of one of those that people have created over time.
Yeah, and there's that second one that's further down, that's, both of them are a little dangerous to get out of, because if you're on the one that's further west, you've got traffic coming around that curve, and if your car is facing west, then you've got to really be looking to see if there's a car coming around that curve before you pull out to get up to speed, so.
Yeah, exactly. That's why they're unauthorized, but, you know, they do, they do park there, and that is another reason why we tried to consolidate when we did the larger parking lot with the asphalt millings, try to create more parking there, but it seems as though, well, the reality is, we get more trail use every year. I think just observing, driving by, you see that there's more and more vehicles parked there every year, so there will be a point in time where we'll, we'll contemplate maybe doing something a little bit more formal there, but we're always going to have those little renegade spots, too.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilwoman Kent, tell me.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, Joe. Hey, do we ever, has anybody ever thought about, I was reading the paper this morning, we're having a little rash of car thefts. Would there ever be a time that we could maybe put some money in the budget for a camera or, because I, I don't see that problem going away, especially for some of the real high-profile ones that are getting hit quite often.
So, Councilwoman Kent, tell me, we do have some cameras. For example, Constellation Trailhead has cameras. It has actually helped us. They, they do view also the roundabout there, and there's been some instances there where there's been some car accidents that it's helped PD kind of get to the bottom of those. Those are a little dicey to, to, you know, where you put them and how you post them and all that stuff, but there are some in different places. We really haven't seen much here. I read a lot in Sedona and different places where, where that becomes a problem, but it's been very rare here, but it's, it's something to keep an eye on, for sure.
Did you mention that they have to be posted because of the wireless applications nowadays, but you're saying legally it needs to be posted?
Yeah, for example, if, if you have a camera near a bathroom, that, those need to be posted, and I would defer to legal, but I think that you have to post signs that say, you know, you're being, you know, visually observed that there's cameras in use.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Did you want to talk about golf course, Joe?
I'm ready.
There it is.
Okay. The golf cars. Legalized farming is what this is. I guess farming is legal, but it is a lot like farming, as I explained to the mayor the other day. There's good years and bad years. A lot of it's based on the weather, you know? You can have a great year and your crop is great, and all of a sudden, the hail comes in and your crop is nothing, but, so it kind of goes up and down. As you all know, you approved a contract to extend Indigo Golf's contract to include the maintenance. I think a very wise move. I think it's going to allow us to move a lot more fluidly with that. We have a lot of better capacity and buying power with Indigo Golf, which is a subsidiary of Trune, which is the largest golf management company in the world, so we'll see some of that. It was mentioned earlier, I think the mayor brought it up, about the revenues, expected revenues in '24. We are very conservative with those. We expect that we'll, we'll exceed those numbers by quite a bit, but we want to be realistic when we set our budgets, but I expect that we'll, we'll exceed that quite a bit. But again, you know, we have terrible weather, that, that could go the other way, but unlikely. Other than that, I'll talk about the capital a little bit. You know, the irrigation improvements is something that I brought to the council several times over the last few years. We've got old irrigation systems, the original irrigation system on the south course, which was the mid-'90s. In the north course, it was 2002. Last year, you guys approved an expenditure which allowed us, which allowed us to replace all of the controllers on both the north and south course. Now we'll be moving into the pump house, revitalizing some of the pumps we have. We're having problems with the pumps right now. Things like that, really just deferred maintenance that, you know, we're stepping up to and trying to get those things in place, which will help us from the efficiency standpoint, and will also help us with the amount of effluent that we use there. So we're really excited about that. Golf course equipment is really, the majority of our fleet right now, the mowing fleet, is from a purchase we did in, a bulk purchase we did in 2007, believe it or not. So we have a lot of older equipment out there.
Just a moment, Joe. So you're using reclaimed water to irrigate both courses, correct?
That is correct, Mayor.
So being able to have the, the pumps and everything work more efficiently, you're saying that the amount of reclaimed water you're going to be able to use will be reduced?
Yes, Mayor. It'll be reduced not only from that, the efficiency of the pumps, but more importantly, by the control that we'll have on the each head that controls the area that it waters. So we'll be way more efficient with our coverage, which will help us, you know, from that standpoint of using less effluent.
So how is the process proceeding? So you got all your controllers fixed?
We got all the controllers fixed. Well, next we'll move on in this fiscal year, and that's what the majority of this money's budgeted for, is working on the pumps and the pump house. Then we'll move into the actual replacing heads, replacing, you know, the underground PVC systems. Like I say, they're, they're past their life expectancies. So I think when I brought it to you guys last time, and when we had our irrigation consultant come in and do a study, I believe it was a $5 to $7 million total project, which we're taking the bites off of right now. Nothing had been done for quite a number of years, so we're, we're kind of making up for lost time a little bit, but first thing was the controllers, which helps us a lot better. Now we can control each head from the computers, whereas before, we had to do some manual work. And then we get into the pump house, get the pumps where we need them, get the pump house functioning the way it does, and the next thing will be heads and swing joints and the actual pipe.
So after all that is completed, then you're going to start working on some of the tee boxes and the bunkering and, and those kinds of things?
That's a perfect segue into the next part of this, which
You're welcome.
We, we, we agree. We need some improvements. The tee boxes, especially on the north course, are in tough shape. The problem that we've had in the past, and another good reason why this Indigo contract is important, is because when we're in the growing season, which is the time to replace those tee boxes, we're, we're maxed out with labor. With Indigo Golf and the resources that they have, they can bring in a contract company to work just on tee boxes in season and get those done. So you'll see that next item is $45,500 that is bunker improvements. That'll reoccur every other year. And then the tee renovations, we have $25,000 in for this year, and then we'll repeat that as we move along and, and do as many at a time as we can. I believe that $25,000 will do about six or seven of the tee boxes, so it'll be a process moving forward, but the bunkers are, they need some improvement. They're not terrible, but this, this money will help us get those a little more up to par. Tee boxes definitely need some work, so we've got a plan in place to, to help get those revitalized. Cart pass are another thing. Our, our cart fleet is new, and we want to, we want to maintain that asset, and one of the ways that we do that is by having cart pass that don't beat them to death. So we put $25,000 in for, and when it says paving, we won't be paving with So we put $25,000 in for, and when it says paving, we won't be paving with asphalt paving. It'll be just a material that'll be firm and unyielding.
And what are the recommended golf balls that'll avoid cart paths and bunkers?
We don't have those, but I would recommend the colored ones because you can find them easier.
Mayor brought them.
Thank you, Mayor. Joe, you mentioned the Indigo kind of improving the, it sounds like the overall groundskeeping component of it. I know that when we went out there, I feel like maybe a year and a half ago, maybe a little bit longer than that, you were having some challenges with fairy ring. Is that, is some of this, these improvements with the irrigation system also hopeful to kind of mitigate some of those issues?
That's partly irrigation, but mostly it's a fungus that gets in the ground. And with Indigo there, too, the bench is really deep. We have a regional agronomist, right? So if we get up against something that, you know, we're trying to decide which method to take care of the fairy ring, you know, he has, and he's been out there and made some recommendations. So we'll work at that. That's a process, too. I will say this with the golf course, because I know all you will get, you know, more rants than raves, probably.
Yeah.
But the fact of the matter is, it's not a sprint, it's a marathon. But we're in a really good position. I think we have a really good capital plan in place. I think that we are really working ourselves towards something, but it isn't going to happen overnight.
Much like farming.
Much like farming, yes. I come from farm country, I can tell you. Nobody gets rich. Then the other couple of things that are on here is just some equipment for the Centennial Center, which is really a good profit center for us. The food and beverage out at the Centennial Center and the Manzina Grill are a good profit center. They just need, it's a $40,000 for some different equipment for the kitchen. And then the last thing is the Manzina Grill, $8,000, the same sort of thing. So with all of that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilman Moore.
I hesitate to ask this question. I think as a city, we provide services for segments of the population that have a specific interest, like people who want to golf, people who want a mountain bike, people who want to do disc golf. And I know several years ago, Prescott Audubon Society, I think, approached the Parks and Rec about maybe building like a viewing platform at the south shore of Willow Lake. Do you recall that?
I do. That was about 10 years ago.
Yeah, it was like a Toyota Going Green grant or something like that. It never happened. But is there any thought, I know that, the reason I hesitate to ask is it's kind of self-serving because I'm a birder, but there's a lot of birders in this community. And is there any thought to maybe building some amenities specifically for that segment of the population that likes to get out and go birding? Just like people like to go mountain bike riding or go golfing or go disc golfing or whatever, that maybe we could have a viewing platform at Willow Lake or some other amenity to appeal to that segment of the population?
I'd be happy to answer that question without hesitation. That is because, you know, I kind of look to some of these groups to come to us and say, hey, what about this?
Yeah.
Could this work? That particular project that you're talking about that was proposed, you know, 10 years ago or so ago, part of it was based on, when the lake is full, you can't go around the east part of the lake. And so it was a very, the cost was very high.
Okay.
And we kind of worked our way around that, accepting the fact that from the trail perspective, there's going to be certain times of the year that you may not be able to use it, but we could live with that. The birding component of that, if the Audubon were to come back to us and say, hey, this location over here might make a great viewing platform and this is what we think it could look like. And you guys are the experts. And when I say you guys, I'm talking about any, any special interest group. I'm here to listen. I represent the taxpayers, you know, and so you guys come to me, I might put something together, bring it to council and the policymakers make the decision. But I'm always open to that. My door is always open and I'm always looking for people to come in and give us great ideas to make it a better place to live.
That's great ecotourism, as we know. I mean, I was just at the Verde Valley Birding and Nature Festival two weeks ago and hundreds of people from all over the country show up, just impore a lot of money into the local economy, like a lot of the other events that occur in our community, whether it's, you know, Whiskey Row Off-Road, you know, or a marathon or a bike race or whatever. So I just, I would, I think that that's something, if we had that group maybe come forward and propose something, it could benefit the community.
Yeah, and I have a good relationship with Sudron and the Audubon as well. So I'd be happy to listen anytime.
Okay, thanks.
Councilwoman Kent, tell me.
Thank you, Mayor. So, so Joe and Mark, if I'm doing my math, kind of just in my head real quick, and I'm not working at that real well, but, so recreation, you know, I get a lot of people that approach us and we talk a lot about open space. And I love all of that. And I love everything that you've got here in the Recreation Department. But that's a big cost. That's what, is it 8% or 9% of our full budget for recreation? If we're looking at, well, I was looking at FY '22 to '23, at the top there, 19-
So-
19 million.
Let me run back here to the percent of the general fund, not of our total.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a point that when you look at what we bring in for our retail sales, I know we can never take a deep dive into this kind of money, but the return on our recreation at the high point of, again, 19 million, that roughly is about 8% to 9% of our budget. So do you feel as though we get that return? I mean, all of the open space we have and the recreation amenities, the attraction that we have with our tourism, that's a large part of how we get the money we do for our retail sales.
Yeah, so, Councilwoman Kent, tell me, so that's a one-time expenditure for, we don't build infrastructure into that, I mean, trails, things that we don't, you know, it's not like a road we have to repave. So what I would say is it's a one-time expenditure that continues to create revenue through visitation for decades to come. So if you looked at it on a year-by-year basis, it might look a little skewed. But if you look at it over the long term, there's certainly a good return on the investment, in my humble opinion.
Right, because we have some of the new things coming up, the Glassford Dells Regional Park, the Dells Gateway Park, the vehicle replacements. I mean, we're at about 6 million, 6.7. So in FYI, or FY '22, '23, at 19 million, 272, is there a breakdown of what that was for the year before? Because obviously it was for some purchases. Was that the Storm Ranch?
Certainly Storm Ranch would have been a big portion of that.
Oh, okay.
And Councilwoman can tell me, I will tell you, too, that we look at this strategically. Open space in, my opinion, and the way we look at it and the way we try to manage it is that, for example, the Granada Dells Gateway Park, that's capitalizing on open space purchases that have been made over the last 25 years that were strategically placed in order to make a central park, if you will. And again, we also look at it like when we link all these pieces together lineally through a trail system, we make our town a more appealing town for the ecotourists that come. Two weeks ago, we had a big mountain bike race that brought, you know, a lot of people and a lot of revenue to the town. So we, I look at it as economic development, it's quality of life, absolutely, but it's also economic development. I'm a businessman, you know, that's the way I look at it, is return on investment. But I think my, my thinking is much longer term, that I'm not going to have to invest in this property by repaving a road or replacing a water line or any of these things, but we're going to experience that ecotourism and the revenue that creates for years and years to come.
Do we have an idea, once we pay for all these projects that we have now, you know, for example, the Glassford Hill Park, what would, if we, if all of those parcels were paid off, do you have an idea what our ongoing cost of doing business every year, our maintenance fees are roughly? I mean, the costs that are, the costs that are going to be reoccurring every single year?
I don't right off the top of my head, but I will tell you, when it comes to open space, we have some seasonal that work on weed abatement and things like that. Chris Hoskins, our Trails Planner, Trails and Natural Park Lands Planner, you know, his time would be allotted to that. But it's really pretty minimal. You know, there is some firewise management that needs to go on in the park system and open space. So I don't have a number for you, but it's not a large number. I could, I could look into that.
No, that's fine. I was just curious what, eventually, once we pay everything off, where we're going to be in terms of the budget. Something that we could, you know, figure out going forward. But I think you've answered my question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Tanny.
Thank you. Joe, I really appreciate you pointing out how there really is truly a financial return on investment when we invest in open space and trails and whatnot. And that's important. But far more important to me is the quality of life piece that you talked about. I don't expect to make money off our fire department or our police department or off our recreation department. It's here for our people to improve their quality of life. And if there's a cost associated, since there's a cost associated with that, we need to recognize that and determine what's an appropriate cost. And I think we're well within that cost. Appreciate what you do.
Councilman Shishka, I heard you down there. Did you have a question?
I know you heard my phone.
Oh.
We all heard your phone.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Next area, which is under Parks and Rec, because it's fleet and facilities, is to our internal service funds. Again, a big chunk comes from the general fund, 56%. And enterprise, it depends on where these facilities are. And all these lovely facilities, like we're sitting in here, of course, take maintenance. Obviously, there's ongoing maintenance, too. I'm sure Tim could tell us how many facilities, but they do have an ongoing operating budget. But we can have Tim go through our key items and capital here, kind of in summary, if you would, Tim.
Sure. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Tim Legar, Deputy Director, Recreation Services. So, not line by line unless you have questions, but the reoccurring stuff, maintenance machinery, equipment, that's kind of the facilities. Different equipment we have that we've got to maintain costs us money each year. Parking lots, that's an ever-going one. We just put money in there, they've been neglected for so long. We're just trying to, we get with Public Works and as they do their pavement preservation project, we tie into that, saves us quite a bit of money. We can get more done with it. So, like the recent alley project back here. One-time expenses, New City Hall, there's a bunch of carryover in that. With completing the third floor, that's our best estimation per square foot of what it's going to cost to complete the building improvements. Library ADA parking, I'm not 100% familiar with that.
So, Tim, that's over and above the original internal loan cost for acquiring the building?
We have a slide here, it's about 40 slides down. I don't have any way to get there besides clicking. So enjoy the clicking sound, I'll do it right here. This slide shows the projected cost currently for the New City Hall with the purchase at 7.5.
15.
And I promised I wouldn't compare a New City Hall to any, any other expenditures. But as you can see, we got a projected any 1.7, then the three for next year, 3.2. And then the projected interest to pay off the remainder of the loan. And then also included on this at the bottom, the current internal loan, which is something I also included in that bi-monthly council update because there's been quite a bit of interest in it. Does that answer your questions?
It does, thank you.
Sorry, let me get back to, which slide were you on?
Back.
One more back. There you go.
Right there. Roger can touch on the ADA parking at the library.
Good afternoon. Yeah, in September of last year, we received a letter from the Department of Education, who oversee ADA at public libraries, that our parking did not meet ADA standards. So with Public Works, we investigated that and there does have to be work to make that parking meet ADA standards. So there will be a portion of the lot redone. The number of parking spaces that are marked ADA will not increase. No, I take that back, there'll be one more additional space. But the real work is to adjust the slope and the pitch of that parking lot.
And if I may, we did come to council regarding these issues. This is part of a settlement agreement with the ADA, based off of a complaint that was initiated. And this, bringing it up to code is part of the settlement agreement on that.
Just going on down, Police Department Cart Lock System, that's just updating their security access system, same system as we have here. It's a local company, so it supports there. New City Hall generators, a carryover. We're still in the process of getting that planned out. Ordering a generator is a year out anyways, so we're not too huge of a rush to get that. We're just trying to get that ordered this current budget year. And citywide cart lock, that's still just working to bring the city to key list, to where we have more security for facilities. HVAC replacements is a good one, $200,000 for next year. If you guys remember, recently you approved $100,000, just under $100,000 at the library for the HVAC that went out that we have to replace. That's part of this, we're trying to get ahead of this. They have a life expectancy and we're trying to replace them before they go out. But right now, we're being reactive. New City Hall signage is carryover. There's still conversations happening with that, with the city manager's office. And then solid waste building updates, the building was built in the late, the admin part was built in the late '90s. It's still got the same tile and paint, so we're just trying to freshen it up a little bit. Vehicle replacements, if you guys want to go line by line, we can, but basically this is what's been proposed in the budget to try to bring the age of the fleet. Obviously, we'd like to replace more, but this is within the budget to do it. I can answer any questions on that.
And again, this is one area of the budget that we do adjust as funds are available, you know, as those one-time capital things are. This year, we, with everything else with the parks, the, those things, we had to defer some vehicle replacement in various departments. But we're still working towards getting our fleet younger, as we talked about a year or two ago, that we have a very old fleet and we need to continue to try to get the old vehicles out of it.
Well, we understand that and it's a big list.
Yeah, it's several slides here.
Can you talk about the fiscal '23 carryover on the fire vehicle?
Yeah, I can start that and Chief Holger can also help with that. Some of that's the ladder truck that was ordered. I believe there's a fire truck that's being built and a pumper. But I'll let him go into the details.
That's simple enough.
So that one-line item is a combination of those three?
Correct.
Yeah, it's just take, they get carried over from last year and then this year. PD, same way, we're having trouble getting cars in, so there's quite a carryover from '23, but then the new ones, hopefully for '24.
Any more questions on this relatively long vehicle list? Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question, maybe for Holger, but Holger, you presented to us recently your plans for, you know, future fire stations and things like that. And I assume that this budget does not contain any future vehicles yet. I mean, we're not putting that into a budget for '24 for a future location?
We do have money in the fiscal '24 budget for the purchase of the pumper for the proposed Station 76.
Okay.
And in part, that is for us to be proactive because of those lead times that we discussed last time I brought you pumper purchase. Obviously, when we're talking about, and I never thought I'd be in this position, but we could potentially build a fire station faster than a fire truck because of, which, you know, so we have to plan a little bit differently, but yes.
That's why I asked the question, if you were already ordering vehicles in this budget for anticipated future fire stations.
Yes, it is. Thank you. Yep, you betcha.
That's a great teaser for everybody to remember, the next episode of the Budget Workshop on the 25th. Fire Department will go into much more detail on those things.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Tim. Next area is the library. Obviously, the library is a big hit on our tax base as well, 78% of their budget. They also have the library district that provides, as you can see from the graph, 17%. And we can talk about, you know, that, we've, Roger can talk about the goings-on with the proposed cuts from the library district and where we ended up with that. Just real quick to get to his numbers and you can talk about that. Their operating budget is relatively stable. They have a couple of capital items this year. And then, of course, there are other key items. And with that, I'll turn it over to Roger.
So you see these, excuse me, so you see these key items in front of you. So you see these, excuse me, so you see these key items in front of you, our library books and materials are repeating expenses every year, we have that $184,000 expenditure spread out over a number of contracts, so we can take advantage of best pricing, whatever comes up. Tim just discussed replacement vehicles, our, our transit van we use to collect books from book drops across the city and to transport items to a central sorting location, I think we transport about 110,000 items a year, and our van just needs to be replaced on account of age and mileage. And then the grants refer to a Library Services and Technology Act grant that we have received for purchase of Wi-Fi hotspots. Those are popular things that we check out at the library, people use them for all kinds of things, I've used them myself when I've gone on vacation to be able to do work on vacation. So they, they get used by students who don't have access to, to hit the internet. And then these next few slides, I just wanted to kind of give you an idea of the heavy use that the library has, so you can see that the visits have climbed back out of our low point from COVID, the spark lines at the bottom give you a graphical indication of that. The items continued, the number of items that are checked out continued to grow rapidly, especially electronic items. The questions answered refer to the number of, number of reference questions that, that our staff answer on a regular basis, so when you, when you look at how many of those get answered a day, it's, it's quite, quite a few. And I know these numbers are all, are large numbers, but it averages out to about 900 to 1,000 people a day use the library. We get about 92 visits an hour, I think, if I did my math right, so. And then this is just an idea to give you, and I, a vision of what a typical monthly use of the library would be. So storytimes obviously are a popular item at the library, so we have about 20 storytime sessions a week, six book clubs use our library for their meetings. We have at least two music presentations a month, one is a more classical presentation and one is a folk presentation. We have 15 types of special programs that are, that are library programs, that vary from presentations about astronomy, presentations about local history, presentations about growing gardens. And then in addition to library use, about 104 community groups use the library, and these are all kinds of community groups, it could be local homeowners association, women, women who are meeting for purpose of supporting one another through pregnancy, there's, there's, if you take a look at our calendar, you'll see there's just a wide variety of programs that could use the, use the meeting rooms.
Is there a question?
Sounds like the community's living room to me.
Thank you.
Do we charge for those meeting rooms?
There is no charge if it is a local organization, a nonprofit organization, if it is a for-profit group, there is a charge according to the size of the meeting room and the amount of time that the meeting room is used for. And I don't have that in my head, but I can get that for you.
Well, I know the county was planning on reducing your support by $162,000 this year, although I understand that they've modified that, can you speak to that?
Yes, we, we typically get a portion of the county library tax, it's, it's been traditionally shared with the seven municipal libraries, that's based on a formula that was worked out about 10 or 12 years ago. The library district director puts in a certain amount of money from the library tax, and it goes through this big formula, and out at the end pops how much is being shared with individual libraries. This year, because of his increased expenses, he let us know that he was going to reduce the amount of money that he was sharing with the public libraries, our reduction originally had been pegged at 162, $162,000 reduction. We weren't very happy with that, as were, as neither were any of the other municipal libraries. So in some discussions with him, and I think he went back to his board with discussions, that reduction has been, has been changed to a $78,000, $79,000 reduction. So it still is a reduction for us, but it's a lot less reduction than we had feared, so...
Well, I understand that he decided not to hitch with a whole amount, to cut it in half essentially.
I think what he told...
And hitch with the other half next year.
I'm sorry?
And hitch with the other half the following year.
I think what, the way he explained it to us is that the county was either reducing or not charging the overhead, which they normally charge the district, and that was allowing him not to reduce it as much. And I think that's for two years, after that second year, I think, is when we're going to see that happen again, unless there's some type of adjustment to that formula or an increase in the library district tax.
Well, obviously, over the past number of years, there's been some dramatic growth in different areas that have county-funded libraries. So have you analyzed that formula to see that it's currently appropriately designed so that we're not getting a larger-than-expected hit on this reduction in, in revenue?
Well, again, if, if I could, Roger, sorry to interrupt, the problem with the formula is the formula talks about how the money that the library district decides will be allocated to municipal library districts will be spread.
Right.
Is based on gate counts, it's based on circulation, it's based on collection size. Nowhere is there a set to say the library district must distribute half of the, half of the levy to the municipal libraries. How much they throw into the formula is dependent on what the library, the, the library district director wants to do. So that's why our monies went down, is because it was, they need more money for the expansion of the Crown King Library and the Coors Lakes Library and that. Another point while I'm on my soapbox is if you look at our tax base, which we've, we've done this before in other, other workshops, 25% of the library district funds come from city Prescott residents. The amount they distribute to us is less than 12% of the money they collect, totally. So, I mean, and again, the point of the library is to be able to bring the library to the remote reaches of the community, but there's no, there was an oversight definitely in creating the formula in that it doesn't have a set percentage that will go to the, the municipal libraries. So as they increase their overhead, as they increase more of these little libraries in Coors Lakes, or Crown King, or Seligman, or Yarnell, or Congress, sorry, Congress, it, it takes away from what a library that actually has a gate count is getting from this, this tax.
Yeah, I think Mark spoke to 12% of the entire, of the entire district tax coming back to, to Prescott, I think with just the, just the amount that is collected in Prescott before the reduction, we would be getting around 48% of the taxes generated, and with that proposed reduction, we'd, we would have only been getting about 35%. So I'm, I'm speaking for myself here, but I think, I think we all as a group need to look at that formula and decide if that's the best way to allocate county-wide tax.
Yeah, and again, it just gets to the point of, you know, do we cut hours of a library that has 1,000 people a day visiting it for a library in, in Congress, which I think is less than 1,000 people in total population? I mean, but, I mean, these are county issues, but it's taking away from our ability to serve county residents as well.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rusing.
I have a question for Roger. You had a community resource specialist that was very popular, I believe was part-time, and I just heard that that position was eliminated, could you explain to me what the rationale was?
That, that position last year was a grant-funded position, we did have it in our proposed budget for, to be a full-time funded position. When we got notice of this reduction, we tried to meet some of those cuts, and in discussion with Tyler, Mark and myself, one of the things that we decided to do was forego making that a full-time position, and it is a part-time position in fiscal year '24's budget.
So we'll continue to have one, but on a part-time basis?
We will continue to have one on a part-time basis, I mean, obviously, it could be a, it, it's a popular program, she helps a lot of people with a lot of things, she helps people who, who don't have the, the ability to utilize computers, so she helps people fill out unemployment forms, she helps people fill out social security, she helps people find housing, she helps people find food. I think as our community grows, it's, it's something that could be used on a full-time basis, but that's something for you to decide.
Maybe next year. Okay, thank you.
All right, our next fund department is community development.
Did you say fun or fund?
Fun, fun, no, it's fun, fun. A big chunk of their, their budget is covered by their fees, building permits, plan inspections, subdivision fees, as you can see by this, only 24% coming from that tax base.
I think we'll take about a 10-minute bio break here, and then reconvene and deal with the community development fund.
Fund, yeah, no D.
So, it's a... Intolating and exciting presentation.
It's a little sarcasm, Mayor, I'm not sure, I appreciate that. We will continue.
I know that's a concept that's completely foreign to you.
Yeah, I don't get it, sarcasm. All right, community development, the lovely Chelsea and her team. The operating budget, like I said, we, just back up to the graph, again, program revenues pay for a majority of this, tax base impact is around a half a million, or 24% of their overall budget. So it's a, it's a heavily user fee-driven area. These are Chelsea's items, or the department's items, I'd be glad to walk through, their central square system is their central square bracket, which is their permitting system, which is the new online system, which is working great, right? It's working good. Okay, we got it good. They also have a scanning project, which is actually, I believe, a carryover from this year, to scan the old permits that need to be kept so that they won't be in physical form. And then we put their grants on there, again, this is more to keep reminding council of, you know, the, the grants that the city has in these areas, and again, the CDBG, we spend a lot of time as a council doing the hearings and all that stuff on that, and the historic preservation master plan also has a grant. Is there anything else you guys want to add? Are you good?
We have questions.
All right, if there's no questions on community development?
No, I will ask.
Okay.
I know historically, CDBG usually gets about $260,000 a year, so we have this additional $498,000 entitlement grant, can somebody explain that?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and council members, my name's Michael McGinnis, I'm the new CDBG coordinator with the city, I started here in January, so, and I will be out in front of everyone on May 23rd with the annual action plan, so, explanation, the CDBG entitlement this upcoming year for program year 2023, we're looking at 255,000 for this upcoming year. The remainder is from previous years, going back to 2021. Still, most of them is our construction projects, like US Vets, we haven't started funding their officer quarters project, let me think, the Gopie House as well, we're still working with the Gopie House on their last year of funding, I think that's around like 50,000 still out for them, and some public service as well, yeah.
Yeah, I know there's a carryover on some of those construction-type related projects and...
That's correct, that's correct.
All right, that explains it, thank you, Mike.
All right, thank you.
All right, any more questions on our community development area, and then we'll move into our final two departments for today, our police and the regional dispatch center. Police is heavily funded by the tax base, as you might imagine, as we talked about earlier, with the property tax increase that is proposed, it goes to fund departments like this that are heavily property tax-based. Here is their overall budget, as you can see, significant increase because of the additional five officers and the two sergeants, as well as the pay increases that went forward, and then the capital is on their slide here, which I'll let Amy walk through, if you don't mind, Amy.
Absolutely, Amy Bonner, your police chief. So here in our, our key items, you're going to see some, a couple of things related to Axon, specifically the first item, and then the last item on that list are related to our Axon body camera, Tasers fleet camera, entering into a two-year contract for 21 fleet cameras for our vehicles, we've been sort of transitioning from older fleet cameras to the Axon product so that we're all on one seamless system. Carryover, as, as Mr. Legler talked about with our, our vehicles, we are having extreme difficulty getting vehicles, so some of these are vehicles that we had approved in last fiscal year but haven't yet gotten, as well as replacement vehicles, as he explained, and new vehicles. We have a couple of different things related to facilities in there, one of them is continued facility enhancements at our current facility that we have at 222 South Marina Street, that building is approximately 30 years old, I believe, and so we're starting to have some growing pains, needing some replacements, some renovations, some carpet, some expansions to our locker rooms and changes to our break room so that we can accommodate people and they're a little bit more comfortable. And then you'll see there, we're working on a long-term project where we, right now we're doing a space analysis at our current building to determine how much space we would need for a substation or a new facility somewhere probably in North Prescott, we have some different options there that we're looking at, collaborating potentially with the sheriff's office, and one of the things that we would like to establish is a complete property and evidence facility, right now, property and evidence at our current building on Marina Street, they're extremely, they're squished in there right now, we don't have enough space for all the evidence that we have to maintain by law, so we've got several facilities throughout the city that are housing our evidence, they're not made for evidence, and so really looking at an evidence building that would house all of our property and evidence, and then allow for future expansion for police facilities as well as potentially communications and get that out of the downtown area. I'm happy to answer any questions.
And just to also, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, Councilman. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, I have a question, are there other items that, and I imagine this is probably true of every department, but I'm imagining there are other items that you didn't put on this list that are big capital projects that we should be aware of down the pipeline?
So I would say the biggest is the potential for a, a police facility, you know, 5.5 million could probably get us into a new evidence facility, depending on, on expenditures, but we're not, we're not building planners, we're working really closely with finance as well as facilities to, that's why we're doing a space or a needs analysis this year to determine how big of a facility would we really need. My, my vision, my hope is that we're always able to maintain a footprint in downtown Prescott at our current building, but the reality is that we're outgrowing that building, the parking is not adequate for what we have now, let alone what we anticipate into the future, and our service needs are, are moving farther into the north, so having a building, maybe a substation somewhere further north would be, I think, advantageous for everybody.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question on the, the regular budget, not, not this lower portion that we're discussing, but the five new officers that, that we talked about that were approved for the budget, do you already have those, or those are projected that you're going to be getting?
Those would be in addition to our, our current allocated sworn positions.
And so the, my follow-up question then is, how are you feeling about the recruitment process and the ability to get five more officers in?
I feel extremely confident, I am, in, in daily discussions with my command staff as our training and recruiting officer, he's doing an amazing job, his name is Sean Hilton, and he is just going out there, finding us great people. As we're sitting here, I was texting about a lateral from another agency, and I believe that by the time the police academy starts in July, we're going to be very, very close to being full, on paper, at least, that doesn't mean that they're going to be with us right now, they're going to have to go through training and all of that, so I feel very, very confident. So I feel very, very confident in our ability to fill those positions.
Fantastic, thank you.
So how many positions are you short right now from full staffing?
I think we're at nine right now.
And you intend...
Nine.
And you anticipate how many going into the academy in July?
At least eight. So we have one officer that left for another state about nine months ago and is coming back, so that's one of those nine that we're taking away. And then we put eight in the academy in July. They will graduate in December and hopefully be off FTO this time next year.
And that excludes any lateral transfers, right?
That's correct.
So if Sean keeps it up, we can be pretty close to full staffing, probably within a year.
Yeah, I would anticipate that. We like laterals a lot.
And you've got new recruits that are going to have to work with a lead police officer, a training officer, for another year before they're really on their own?
Their FTO is about four months, once they get out of the police academy.
All right, so there is a light at the end of the tunnel.
I hope so. I hope it's not a train.
Kathy. Thank you, Amy. I have a question going back to the police substation. As you know, we have a lot of growth up north, and it's, the fire department is planning on having a facility up there. Is there any talk of combining the two and having a regional substation, working with the county, maybe Prescott Valley? I mean, is there, I know a lot of things are still in the planning station.
So that's a really good question, and I'm glad you asked it. One of the greatest things about working at the city is the relationship that Chief Dura and I have been able to develop. And of course, every time there's discussion about a new facility, we look at ways to collaborate, and we would do that with every fire station that he builds. We will probably have a space there speaking for him. I can't see him, he's still, yeah. And those are things that we talk about frequently. The other thing is the potential and the possibility of partnering, like I said, with the sheriff's office. The discussions are ongoing about that, but the potential for that to happen around the SunDog area is tremendous opportunity for us, for both agencies and both the county and the city.
Yeah, and also I might add, from what I can tell, for funding and grants, if something is more of a regional benefit to the general area, that you'll have more success. That's just my observation.
That's correct. Most of our grants are done in partnership or, you know, regional cooperation so that we can share our resources.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilwoman can't tell me.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, Chief, how are you?
I'm great, how are you?
Good. I love to hear about the regional effort and also the effort with the fire department. I was actually just talking to Chief Dura about the new station. They seem to be a little ahead of you in terms of getting some money set aside for a new facility. Have you guys talked about adding on just another room or something so that, you know, if he gets the facility up quicker, and Mark, maybe this is for you also, could we maybe put two or three policemen out there on a temporary basis if that station is up first?
Yeah, absolutely. We'll get very creative. We continue to be creative with the building that we have now. We've gotten very good at working with facilities to turn closets into offices, and they're actually nice, it's not very awful. So yes, we get creative very quickly and look for every opportunity we can to spread out those resources.
Now, Mark, do we have, I was just going to go back in that and look, do we have a chunk of money set aside for a future? I mean, are we saving a little bit every year to go towards another police station?
Well, and again, you saw the capital, it's shown to be distributed. So in the general fund, not specifically, they are on our plan, but there are no funding source. And again, when we get to fire department next week, if the fire department is building a fire station and police need the $5 million substation somewhere, wherever evidence thing, you know, we can combine those either into a GO bond if we want to take it to the voters. We can do an excise tax election and use our general fund for the debt service if there's capacity left in those recurring revenues. So, no, the needs, the needs of the general fund consume the resources that are there. And as we mentioned briefly, probably so briefly nobody noticed, but when Tim was up to make this budget balance, we had to move vehicles out. We had to defer some police replacements and things like that from '24 to future years. So yeah, there isn't a huge budget out there for the capital. Large capital like buildings are great to borrow for because they're 30-, 40-year assets. You can amortize it out that long, reduce the impact. You can take it to a vote for a GO bond. That's how we built the current fire station in '89, when I took that out to a GO bond back then, and it passed. It was only 3.4 million. I don't know why Amy can't do another station for that same dollar amount.
Not happening.
And also, there is money accumulating. If you'll notice on that line item, there is general fund GF, but also IMP. We have a police impact fee, we have a fire impact fee, which are accumulating balances that are available for a share of the debt service or for a direct cash pay, depending on the amount that gets accumulated. We are going to be doing the rate study, as I talked about in '24, which will include impact fees for our utilities, but also for police, fire, and streets, to have those updated. So Amy's process, I'm sorry, Chief Bonney's process that she's going through right now is critical to that, so we can get a good number, so we know what dollar amount she does need for those capital facilities. And Chief Dura's process is also going to make that a much more effective impact fee study than we had five years ago when we did it.
Let me ask you real quickly about, and I'll ask this question again when we get into the fire department part of it, but when we go out and design this fire department, is there any requirement that we have to do it completely bare bones? I mean, could we, could we build this with the vision of maybe a five-year growth pattern? Because it makes sense to me to try to get ahead of the issue than kind of be behind. Otherwise, potentially in five years, we could be too small, it's not accommodated, now we've got to look at another remodel.
Absolutely, you build it for the future that your fire professional sees coming down the road and what your fire professionals recommend.
I was with Chief Dura. We went to look at the, probably the Taj Mahal of police departments, and then we went and looked at a bare bones police department, I'm sorry, fire department, not a fire station, not a police station. And major difference, probably $500,000 in building cost difference because of one of the stations being located in a CCNR-controlled HOA where they had to overbuild it per the regulations. But anyway, we'll talk about that later, but thank you, and I think that's a great idea to be able to give you guys a room, at least if you're in North Prescott. Thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, I'm wondering, I know that there are obvious benefits, like within the department that exist when you kind of bring up your staffing level. I imagine that that improves morale, decreases burnout, probably improves safety and injury protocol. But what are, with these new fire, police officers coming into the budget, what will the impact look like for the community? How will the community kind of see, what will the outcome be from increasing the staffing to this level?
Well, these five are really going to help to just give our officers relief. You know, the way, the best way I can describe it is, we don't have a bench right now that's deep enough to absorb when somebody gets hurt. If I have somebody that goes out for training, it has to be covered with overtime, and the resources that are used to cover that with overtime are finite, right? They're people, and so they have to be covered with overtime. Training has to be covered with overtime. We don't have the capacity in our current schedule to facilitate on-duty training, so they have to do it on their days off frequently, which again, leads to burnout and stress. A lot of our specialty units, such as community services, our traffic safety enforcement section, a majority of those have been collapsed to cover patrol because we just don't have the staffing that we need to ensure that we can do what we need to do. So building into the future with this year and future, you know, subsequent years, doing the math the way I learned at good old Prescott High School, I believe what we need to do into the future is be, you know, with eight squads or eight people on each squad, we need some special enforcement. As you've seen by the press release today, we have some issues here that we need to deal with, and we just don't have the capacity to do that right now.
So in some ways, if I'm hearing you correctly, this is laying the groundwork to deal with those specific issues and kind of build out. So we, it sounds like we kind of need to recover where we were and then kind of build on that, is that correct?
That's my goal, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments?
The next slide, just go, I keep, this is fun. The next slide kind of goes over the grants the PD has at its disposal. Of course, we talked about the SMART and SAFE grant, a portion that's going to be used for their new sergeant, and as an ongoing expense that, that will be covered, that's a, you know, there are enough revenue seems to be coming in each year to cover that. There's also a balance there that we can use for other things, opioid settlement, again, you know, there's the whole PANT funding and that, which I'm sure Amy will bring back at the appropriate time, as well as other grants. I'm not going to go through them all because some are not huge, but the police department does a great job getting a lot of grants, and some are just dictated by settlements and state law. Next area, don't go anywhere, Amy. Next area is the Prescott Regional Communications Center. And again, as we talked about, about half of that is paid for by our partners. They have an ongoing budget, and you can see kind of a significant budget increase. And again, part of that is because of the projections and forecasts. When you've got half your force vacant, it's hard for us budget people to know where you're going to hire. So we might be a little high just on the budget, but again, we only spend what we spend there. And with that, they have only a few items here. I don't know if you want to talk to those, Amy?
So sure, central square, Tri-Tech computer aided dispatch. Again, all of these are shared with our partners, just to upgrade our dispatch system in there, as well as Z-tron radio software installation. So Z-tron is the, kind of the brains of what helps to run our radios across police and fire operations here in the city of Prescott.
Any questions?
All right, any questions on regional dispatch? Councilmember Roussing.
Thank you. It says here, has an asterisk, costs shared with partners. Could you describe who those partners are?
Absolutely. So PRCC is a regional dispatch center, a public safety answering point. We have eight police and fire partners that we dispatch for and work with, answer 911 calls for, as well as one private entity that partnered with us as well. So about 50%, 49% of that budget is the Prescott Police Department and the Prescott Fire Department. The remainder of that budget is split with our partner agencies, the largest of which include CAFMA, Central Arizona Fire Medical Authority, Prescott Valley Police Department, Yavapai College Police Department, Walker Fire, and...
The tribe?
Thank you, yes, Yavapai Prescott Tribe.
And those percentages change every year, they're based on call volume from the year before.
I just asked that question...
Priorities?
Pardon me?
Your ambulance?
We dispatch for priority ambulance, that's correct.
I just asked that question because I just wanted to stress the importance of regional cooperation and the mutual aid and assist program that we participate in. Your services don't stop at our sitting limits.
No, that's correct, thank you.
Yeah, I'm not going to ask your opinion on sharing dispatch with the county and the sheriff's department. That just came to my attention this morning from the supervisor chairman, James Gregory. So, but I think it's worth talking about and seeing if there might be some economies of scale and improved efficiencies.
All right. As we look here, we have come to the end of our first day. Went so fast, I mean, so much fun. Again, were there any areas as we look, Mayor, I think Councilmember Roussing has a question down there.
Councilmember Roussing.
Thank you. I'd like to go back to the FY '24 property tax levy. You know, raising a tax is a pretty serious, pretty serious business, and I just wanted to revisit it for the taxpayers and just clarify the rationale behind this and what the monies are going to be used for. And my question is, instead of the monies just going into the general fund to be used, can they be earmarked for like a specific use, like for the fire, regional fire station, police station?
Well, again, the property taxes are just a general fund revenue source that can be allocated for the governmental purposes. By adopting a budget, you are earmarking it for the five new firefighter, or five new police officers or any of those other things. So it is allocated to cover this, these needed service levels that city management has brought you.
Okay, and what percent, again, was it going to be? It says here 14.86, but it actually, in dollars, it comes out to how much per...
Two, per house. It comes out to about $3.25 per $100,000. So that's about 13 bucks for a $400,000 house.
So about 13 bucks?
A year, yeah. About a dollar a month.
Yeah, because I wanted to stress that because people hear property tax increase, and we just want to make sure that they realize that it's going to go to public safety, and it's going to be a pretty good bargain for $13 a year.
Great point, Councilmember. Here's just the schedule, just to remind everybody, our exciting sequel to today, which will be heavily related to capital, and there'll be a lot more pictures in that one. I don't have too many exciting pictures of accountants and stuff. Then after that, the tentative budget will be coming back to council on the 13th, and then that'll be published as required by law, as well as the truth in taxation notices. On the 27th, we'll do public hearings for the budget, for our alternative expenditure limit. Remember, we're home-ruled, so we do the alternative expenditure limit, and then the property tax, followed by an exciting roll call vote on whether to continue with the property tax. And then we will adjourn and reconvene into a special meeting where you will be able to consider adopting a budget. And the property tax will come back the first council meeting in July on the 11th. With that, any final questions as we move forward? And again, if there's anything else you think of, I didn't hear anything today, but if you think of anything in the next few days, please email us, call me, stop by, catch me at Costco, whatever you want to do, let me know, and we will get it in the 25th final budget workshop.
Say, Clark, do we have any public comment?
Nope.
Any other questions or comments from the council? And well, thank you very much for a very exciting and scintillating presentation, Mr. Woodfield.
Thank you, Mayor.
This budget workshop is adjourned.
Thanks, Mark.